Good morning, it is eight thirty and I will call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, December the tenth. There is an agenda in front of us, are there any additions to that agenda? Counselor Penner, then Counselor Cunningham.
Just a small report on drum solid waste in regards to EPR.
Okay, drum solid waste will be nine point one. Counselor Cunningham.
Council committee reports, I'll do a division five update, please.
Division five, update, nine point two.
I'll do a quick one on community futures.
Nine point three, community futures. I have a quick report on my division seven rate pair meeting, nine point four. Any other additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Counselor Christie.
I move the agenda as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The regular council meeting minutes of November twenty six have been pre-circulated. Were there any corrections or? Counselor Whitstock.
Yes, I noticed in three point two, the public hearing, it should actually be the village of Linden, not the village of Carbon. So slight correction.
Good catch. Okay, so just one small correction. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Counselor Whitstock.
Yes, Mr. Reeve, I would, I would move the minutes as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Whitstock. We have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. We're just gonna get that. Okay, there we go. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Sorry, yes, Counselor Whitstock made that motion. The first item in our agenda today is four point one, non-county water connection for the Acme Golf Course. And welcome, Mr. McKernan. And anytime you are ready.
Thanks, Reeve, counsel. Today I come forth with a request for decision on a non-county water connection for the Acme Golf Course. Neale County received a request from the village of Acme to consider connecting the Acme Golf Course to our rural water system. The request does fall underneath our policy fourteen dash seventeen, and, and this was the first step in doing that was the request from Acme. The Acme Golf Course is considered adjacent to our water line. It is just across the range road from our, our water line. We would need to directionally drill underneath that wa, that range road to bring the water there, which would also be part of their cost as per, per the policy. As well, we did do a water model back in two thousand and eleven that did show that there was the capacity to, to service this area, and this was done prior to any policy in place for non-county residents. They never chose to connect at that time. The water models, it should still be, should still be pertinent, just because when they do a model, they, they include everything that's already on the system, and then everything that's added to the system when they do new ones. So I don't see any difference in the water model if we had to make them do a new one. So I think that two thousand and eleven one should suffice. Yeah, so as per the policy, they agree to the costs and all that, and we would, if approved, we would deal with the village of Acme to move this forward.
Okay, so the recommendation then would be that we approve the request from the village of Acme?
That would be, the recommendation from administration would be to approve the request, yes.
Okay, so would someone care to make a motion to that effect? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I move that we approve the current request from the village of Acme on behalf of the Acme Golf Course for water connection to Neale County's rural water line at rates set forth in the master rates bylaw and in conjunction with policy fourteen seven, now non-county residential connection to rural water line.
Okay, thank you for the motion. We have a motion on the floor. Are there any questions? Counselor Whitstock.
Yeah, I guess I've got a question through the reef to C A O on, I know there's been a number of connections on that Selkirk water line since two thousand and eleven. There's been some larger ones also that have been hooked in there. I don't know which way the rooting is from the reservoir, but I know our water that we are hooked to on the Selkirk system has, I wouldn't say it's got issues, but there are times when you have more or less pressure and flow than normal. So I, I don't wanna just have a, oh, what is the word, the investigation or the water modeling done just for the sake of, I ju, I think I would like to see the water modeling redone, and just to see if it is poss, if there's possibly been a change to the system. Like, maybe the rooting is completely different, and maybe none of that other stuff is connected, but I, I guess my, my question would be is, I would like to see a water modeling done. Sorry for the rambling.
So, Mr. Hogan.
Pardon me, through the chair, I'll defer that question to the presenter, to see, we can talk about the water modeling, how we've changed that process since two thousand and eleven, and what issues might be there.
Mr. McKernan.
Sure, through the reef. So the water modeling process hasn't changed since then. I can definitely, if that's a, a decision of council, I've redone. It was two thousand and eleven, so it was a long time ago. So we can get confirmation on it again, I guess, since it has been that long. As for the flows and pressures and things like that, we have the potential maximum of four imperial gallons per minute at forty PSI. That doesn't mean you're always gonna get it. Depending on the activity on the water line, you could get down, if it's a high peak flow, you could be down to one and a half gallons per minute. It's just all depending on the, on the flows and what's happening on the water line. So even if these guys are knocked on, I mean, people still could, like I said, depending on the activity on the water line, you could be down to two imperial gallons per minute and things like that at all. It's, it's just a rural, the life of the rural water line really kind of thing, right? So I like to always kind of say, in, in all my things, I usually include as a potential maximum of four imperial gallons per minute, because you're not always guaranteed to have it, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. McKernan. Are there any other questions? Counselor Penner.
Just for clarification, so the billing of this will go through Acme, and then I will bill the, is that how we do with those urban rural ones?
Through the reef, yeah, that's correct. So everything we would do monetary wise and billing wise would all be through the village of Acme, then the village of Acme would obviously go to the golf course for reimbursement after that.
Okay, are there any further questions? Mr. Hogan, please.
Through the chair, not, not necessarily a question, but going back to the, the item raised by Counselor Whitstock, if council does want to proceed, you may want to consider a, an amendment to the motion, just to include pending the results of a suitable, suitable water model study. And then what that does is once that water modeling is done, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to bring that item back to council if that was suitable, it could just go forward.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. If there are no, all right, Mr. McKernan.
I just, through the reef, just if, if you did, I don't know what amendment you'd have to make it or not. In policy fourteen seventeen, it does say that they have to do, do one, but I just thought if they've already completed one, I thought I'd put that out there. But the policy does say that they do have to complete it, and go from there. So if you wanted to stick with that, I think, but an amendment, if you said to ensure they did it to replace the two thousand and eleven, then yeah, then I think amendment would probably be good, too.
Okay, thank you for that. So discussion with council then. If the policy states that water modeling is required, and if administration understands that that is the request from council that the water modeling be conducted previous to that, do we feel we need to amend the motion, or is that understanding enough? So I'm looking for a direction from council. Do we want to make an amendment, or do we want to go forward? Mr. McKernan, again, I see.
I, I apologize. I should maybe mention, because maybe an amendment might be good, because I know through discussions with them, it was already talked about that the water modeling was completed in two thousand and eleven, so maybe amendment might be a good idea, just to ensure that you would like that updated, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. No, that's good, that's good information to have. If they have an expectation that the water modeling from two thousand and eleven is only going to be the requirement, then we need to be very clear that we're expecting something different. Deputy Reeve, what's, Deputy Reeve McGee.
Thank you. So I, I'm willing to make that a frankly amendment, pending the results of an updated water model study at the end of that. Yep, that'd be great.
Okay, so the, the, there was a question about issues with water flow, and as a result of that, the amendment to the motion would be is we are going to require an updated water model study. And so the motion now reads that council approved the request from the village of Acme on behalf of the Acme Golf Course for a water connection from Neale County's rural water line at the rates set for in, in the master rates bylaw, and in conjunction with policy fourteen dash seventeen, non-county residential connection to the rural water line pending the result of an updated water modeling study. Quite a mouthful. Any further discussion or comment to the motion that's in front of us? Counselor Phobes.
I guess I just, through the chair, to Mr. Hogan, who is responsible for overseeing this project? Is it gonna be the county, or is it gonna be the town of Acme? Just curious.
Mr. Hogan.
Through, through the chair, this is a connection to a Neale line, so we, we have some oversight on that, and we bill the cost back to, back to the village.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Hogan. Any further questions to the motion or discussion? I'm not seeing any, so are we ready for the question? Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. So thank you, Mr. McKernan.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, and we look forward to hearing back. All right, the next item on our agenda is five point one point one, bylaw nineteen oh six, road closure railway avenue within ex hamlet of Allingham. And welcome, Ms. Keever.
Good morning.
Anytime you're ready.
Ruben Schiele had approached the county in their desire to purchase a railway avenue which lies on the east side of the property within the ex hamlet of Allingham. By closing the undeveloped avenue and ultimately purchasing the land, it would allow him to maintain the area and increase the size of his lots. Ruben and Aaron Schiele are the owners of all the lots on the east side of Allingham, east of Park Avenue, which includes lots one to five, block one, plan three two five one, E I, plan three two five one O T, Center Street, and plan nine three one zero three six six, block one, for a total of six separate titles. The applicant is required to survey, purchase, and consolidate Railway Avenue into the adjacent lots. A consolidation of all the six ti, six titles into one title is also being requested. Closure of Railway Avenue will not interfere with legal access to any other parcels. The total approximate size of all the lots owned by the applicant is six point six five acres. The closure of the avenue would add an additional two point zero nine acres. An encroachment agreement is also registered on the title for the, for a garage, which could be removed once the road closure has been registered. On August twentieth, twenty twenty four, council gave first reading to bylaw nineteen oh six, and the public hearing was held on September tenth. No letters were received in favor or opposition to the road closure. And then, the big surprise, the Minister of Transportation approved the closure on November fifth, twenty twenty four.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I said, too. The applicant will be responsible for all costs associated with hiring the surveyor, which they have, purchasing the land, and transferring to consolidate Railway Avenue into the adjacent lots. The consolidation will increase the acreage of the applicant's property from six point six five acres to eight point seven four acres. As per the county's road closure process, if the road is being closed for consolidation purposes, an appraisal of the land must occur prior to second reading to determine the fair market value of the avenue to be consolidated. The applicant can hire an appraiser or use the value of the county's assessor, which the, the value the county's, county's assessor advises. The assessor provide an amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the additional two point zero nine acres, and for the consideration of added value it would bring to his property. The applicants have indicated they accept the assessor's value. So your options, do I need to read this?
Sure.
Or you can discuss, whatever you want to do. I guess your options today is that council approve and accept a value of sixteen thousand for approximately two point zero nine acres of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham, or that also council move second reading of bylaw nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham, that council move third reading of bylaw nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham, or you could defer third reading or request additional information prior to third reading.
Thank you, Ms. Keever. So, so we have a recommendation that we approve and accept the value of sixteen thousand for approximately the two point zero nine plus or minus acres, and that we do second and third reading. So what's the wish of council? Counselor Phobes?
I would make the motion that council approve and accept the value of sixteen thousand for approximately two point zero nine acres of Railway Ave within the ex hamlet of Allingham. council approve and accept the value of sixteen thousand for approximately two point zero nine acres of Railway Ave. within the ex hamlet of Allingham.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion that we approve and accept the value of approximately sixteen thousand. Oh, sorry, the value of sixteen thousand for approximately two point zero nine plus or minus acres of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham. Does council have any questions? Okay, Counselor Phobes.
Just for clarity through the chair, Mr. Hogan, I had this question. When we sell properties to people to consolidate the sixteen thousand, can you just explain where that goes, please?
Mr. Hogan, please.
Through Mr. Chair, the I would have to confirm if that goes into if that's going into general revenue or if that's being put into a reserve somewhere. So we can get that answer back to you, but that.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll look forward, I guess, to hearing that answer. Is there any further questions with regard to the motion, any discussion related to accepting the value of sixteen thousand? Not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question that we approve and accept a value of sixteen thousand for approximately two point zero nine plus or minus acres of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham. Motion by Counselor Phobes. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. There's a couple other items there that we need to deal with. Counselor Penner.
I'd make the motion that council move second reading of by law nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham.
Okay, so we now have a motion that we approve second reading of by law nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham. Are there any questions related to the motion? Or any discussion? Not seeing any, so I am going to call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. Counselor Whitstock.
Well, at this time, I would move the council give third reading to by law nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Whitstock. So we now have a motion to approve third reading. Are there any questions or any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So Counselor Whitstock has moved that we approve third reading of by law nineteen oh six to pursue the road closure of Railway Avenue within the ex hamlet of Allingham. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that's approved unanimously as well. Thank you, Ms. Keever. Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Chair, just in response to the question that was raised, that funding generally goes into general revenue, so it contributes to the year-end surplus, which council typically designates into reserves at year end.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So the revenues generated from the sale of the land will be going into general revenues, which contributes to possible surplus at the end of the year. All right, on our agenda next is five point one point two by law nineteen ten, public hearing cancellation. And welcome, Ms. Hazelton.
Thank you. The Planning and Development Department wishes to request the cancellation of the public hearing for the subject land that is located southwest of Three Hills, approximately four point two miles on a portion of the southwest of twenty nine thirty one twenty four west of four. The rezoning was for a portion of the land to go from agricultural district to light industrial district. Under section seventy six of the land use by law, one of the existing adjacent dwellings is not over the eight hundred meter setback requirement. We, however, will continue to work with the applicant to explore other options that may work for him.
Okay. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to make the motion that council move to cancel the public hearing to be held on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five at ten AM.
Okay, so we do have a motion to cancel the public hearing to be held on January twenty eighth twenty twenty five at ten AM. Is there any questions from council related to the motion? Counselor Cunningham.
Just a question for me, just because we don't get this very often, like, did something change within the application from the original one, or how did this come about?
No, we just on further review, we had dismissed a residence in the area. And so we have already had that conversation with the applicant. No notifications have gone out. So we've caught it on time, but we don't want to put them through a process that they will not be successful.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other questions, any other discussion related to the motion to cancel the public hearing? If not, I have a motion from Deputy Reeve McGee that the council move to cancel the public hearing to be held on January twenty eighth twenty twenty five at ten AM. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Hazelton. The next item on our agenda is five point two point one twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight, egg service board producer member appointment. And welcome, Ms. Sherlock. And anytime you're ready.
Thank you. Good morning, council. So the first of my items today is to bring forward the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight ASB producer member appointment. So as you are aware, the structure of the Agriculture Service Board has been adjusted to be four producer members with three council members and an alternate. As such, there will not be a producer member leaving this term. Heather Barret has agreed to stay on for an extended term. And all producer members have been extended now to a four-year term versus the three that it was originally. With that, I am pleased to bring before you the recommendation from the egg service board for the new producer member. After the November thirteenth ASB meeting, they reviewed three applications and in an anonymous, after an anonymous vote, they motion to nominate Rinnska Metzger to council for consideration. In general, the ASB and staff would like to thank all the applicants for their submissions and encourage anyone who wasn't successful to apply again next year. And at this point, I will put that recommendation before the board.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Sherlock. So we have a recommendation that council appoint Rinnska Metzger to the Agriculture Service Board as a producer member. What's council's wishes? Counselor Christie.
I'd make the motion to appoint Rinnska Metzger to the Agriculture Service Board as a producer member for the period of twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. And the term is recommended by the ASB.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Christie. We now have a motion to appoint. Are there any questions from council related to the motion? Counselor Cunningham.
No questions, just a comment, just to further to what Ms. Sherlock said. It's exciting to me that we had more applications and positions, so again, just further to what you said, just encourage people keep applying. And yeah, that's awesome. That's a good problem to have and just, yeah, welcome to Mrs. Metzger.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Cunningham. Any other questions or comment discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, I too will echo that sentiment that we're very thankful that our great payers and residents are excited to serve on some of these boards and so it is appreciated at council level that we have those applications and so certainly thank you to everyone who applied and of course, congratulations to Ms. Metzger if she gets this vote shortly, which is likely to happen. So we have a motion from Counselor Christie that council appoint Rinnska Metzger to the Agriculture Service Board as a producer member for the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight term as recommended by the Egg Service Board. If there's no further discussion or question, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sherlock. The next item on our agenda is five point two point two vegetating vegetation cutting at Hamlet Community Center, so welcome back, Ms. Sherlock, and welcome, Mr. Conkin. And anytime you are ready.
Absolutely. So at the April sixteenth Committee of the Whole meeting, administration presented a request for vegetation cutting services, so mowing and weed whipping at by the Wimbourns Community Center. And a background of the vegetation cutting services delivered by both Neheal County to both Neheal County sites and privately owned cemeteries was completed. The committee recommended that council consider mowing and snow removal agreements with the rural community halls within our Neheal County hamlets. The committee also recommended that council consider the development of a mowing of private cemetery level of service after consultation with the private cemeteries. The development of the official service agreements for the private cemeteries and a fee level change for twenty twenty five will be brought to a future council meeting. For today, we will be looking at the hamlets and the vegetation cutting and snow removal services as per the community of the whole's recommendation. So currently, the vegetation cutting program costs are calculated out to two hundred and sixty seven dollars and seventy nine cents per hour for the cutting with four staff members, mowers, whippers, fuel. And then transportation for the trucks and trailers and the four staff is roughly calculated at four dollars and sixty cents a kilometer. This is for the current vegetation cutting program completing forty eight sites on a four-week rotation. So that includes all of our county sites, cemeteries and the locations within the hamlets. Options for service delivery model. So we have two options here. We can do an agreed upon minimum number of cuts per year at a specified amount with an additional cuts and an increased cost for travel. The option two here would be cutting by request as it fits into the program's schedule and availability without a guarantee of reaction time. Going into the table here, so we've reflected the costs of the cost per hour and the cost per kilometer into the cutting of the following locations, the Huxley Hall and Curling Rink, the Wimbourn Hall in Ball Diamond, the Torrington Hall and the Swalwell Hall, as those are the locations within hamlets that we that potentially could fall under this program. Under the options listed, so the first option would be to subsidize the full cost, which would be the annual cost for the four cuts themselves would be four thousand seven hundred and sixty six dollars and fifty seven cents. Plus the travel costs would come out roughly to ten thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars and seventeen cents. Option two, full cost recovery would be those same amounts being charged back to the the centers at a rate of two sixty seven seventy nine per hour for four cuts. Option three would be a fifty percent cost recovery, set the rate at a hundred and thirty three dollars and ninety cents per hour for four cuts with the revenue generated being two thousand three hundred and eighty three dollars and twenty eight cents for the cuts and the travel at two dollars and thirty cents per kilometer, coming out at five thousand one hundred and ninety seven and fifty eight cents. Option four would be to set the a rate of a thousand dollars per year for four cuts with a revenue generation of four thousand dollars. The subsidized amount of that would be seven hundred and sixty six dollars and fifty seven cents with the travel. That would be six thousand three six thousand three hundred and ninety five dollars and seventeen cents. Option five would be to decline vegetation cutting at any of the community centers. Before I move on, are there any questions on those figures?
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Sherlock. Is there any questions on the information presented to this point? Counselor Christie.
The cemeteries that you cut now are at a flat rate of two hundred dollars each time or?
They're a flat rate of two hundred dollars per year.
Per year, okay.
So I guess I would have a question. Other than the Wimbourn Hall and Ball Diamond, that's sort of requested this service, have we had conversation with any of the other community centers?
No, the last request that we had was from Swalwell Hall three years ago and that was denied.
Okay.
Or declined, sorry.
And this most recent request is is recent, like the Wimbourn Hall?
Yes, and I will note that the Huxley Hall and current and Curling Rink has been a part of our rotation as long as we've been managing the program. But we don't have a current agreement for that service, so.
Okay.
I can keep going into.
Yes, maybe if you want to just finish your.
For sure. So the community centers listed in table one are located in the hamlets. They're already part of the existing cutting rotation and could be integrated with a lesser impact to the overall program, extending the cutting period by about half a week. Depending on the rate of vegetation growth and any special event requests. Although the travel already occurs to the hamlets for the cutting, there may be additional travel required if there's additional time needed to complete the sites beyond what can be accomplished in one day. Furthermore, any specially requested cutting will necessitate an additional trip. It could be charged at a predetermined rate. Or it could be not included in the offered services. The addition of the Hamlet Community Centers to the cutting program would contribute to the continued care and maintenance of the communities these centers are a part of. The service is often difficult item for volunteer groups to source, especially locating individuals with the proper equipment, time and adequate insurance coverage to complete this role in a public space. Alternatively, this would be an increased service level to the Parks Department that would have to be clearly defined through contracts, policy and an adjustment to the master rates by law. Should additional requests come from other community centers outside of the hamlets or other private cemeteries in the county, additional considerations would have to be taken. At this point, I'll let Mike carry on on the.
Mr. Conkin.
Thank you. So for the snow plowing side of things for the community centers, our skid steer would be costed at about a hundred and nineteen dollars an hour there. And then one ton truck to move it to that site. So that one ton truck could also be, if the one ton plows are available and able to accomplish the job, not all sites are able to have that style of plow in there to complete it to a good snow removal program. Time spent at each site is going to be very dependent on snow loads, whether and how often we're there, if it's on a request basis or if they would like us to hit it every time it snows. Those times are going to be various. As to the snow removal of piles and stuff, we we don't have that built in here for cost. It would just be that equipment at that rate. And then if we had hauled it away, obviously, we would have to charge them for a tandem truck as well. But that usually would only work out to about an hour, depending on the snow piles. Again, it's very weather dependent on the snow removal side of things, so.
Okay, thank you.
So just in the financial and staffing implications, so we've detailed the financial impacts above. And it may include other potential costs depending on alternative options that may be brought forward. Staffing with the existing staff and resources, the addition of the four Hamlet Community Centers would extend that rotation to approximately four and a half weeks from the existing four weeks, depending on the vegetation growth. Should council want to take on the community center mowing while retaining or decreasing the length of cutting rotation, then additional resources would be needed and could be determined. As Mr. Conkin had said, the snow plowing would be highly dependent on the snowfall. At this point, the counts, the options that we have before council are to select any combination of the options listed above for vegetation cutting or snow plowing, to select an alternative option determined by council and to request additional information.
Okay. Okay, so there's a lot here. Questions, Councilor Cunningham.
So, through the reeve, a question for the CEO. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion about moving away from private snowplow, snow removal from residences. There was, it was kind of talked about insurance concerns. It was also brought up that we don't want to compete with private business. So, I just was looking for some clarity. Do we have those same concerns with this vegetation cutting, RFD?
Mr. Hogan.
Through Mr. Reeve, the, I'll address the latter one first. The the director, sorry, the former one. The direct competition with private industry would still be would still be in place. So, there is a there is a general concern there with with council if you want to perform that. The what we do see regarding community groups, cemeteries, et cetera, is that these are community service organizations and that our support of those would probably come at a lower cost than what they could do for for private competitors. So, that's a bit of a nuance in in this one. Regarding the liability component, we have less concern around that because we have the proper equipment to do these tasks. When we're doing private laneway plowing, the equipment that we're using for that is not necessarily the the best or right equipment for those private laneways.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or clarification required? Councilor Penner, please.
Would the community associations that are listed here, if they take on just the mowing, would they have to do the snow removal or you would be leaving the options open?
That those options would be up to council.
Go ahead, Councilor Penner.
Furthermore, is it all or none? All the community associations, or if there's only one or two want to do it, that's fine?
Through the Reeve, at this point, it again would be up to council. We have had the one request. I don't believe that the the recommendations and the numbers that I have put forward here with the four and a half weeks per for that extension, that would be if all of them participated. If only one or two, then it would be reduced. The numbers as per the rates and the amount it takes for us to deliver this service, that's the rate regardless of one versus all.
Any other questions? Councilor Penner.
Being part of a small hole over the years, for many, many years, it's always been an issue trying to get somebody to come mow at a reasonable rate is another a big hurdle, too. These rates are higher than what we're paying right now, but I mean, this is a member that we're paying right now, and I'm sure they would give it up no problem. I'm I'm all for this, to be honest with you. And these facilities, we try to use as a council ourselves, use our own facilities for different meetings and that kind of stuff. So, I would like to my to work with these associations where possible.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Forbes.
Through the chair to the CAO. If in the future, all of the hall boards that we currently have within our borders were decided to go on to this, what impact would that have to the program?
Through the chair, I'll defer that question to the presenters.
So, Ms. Sherlock or Mr. Conken?
Yes, so should, just for clarification through the Reeve, is are you speaking to the four that I've done here or to all of them?
I'm speaking to, in the future, if all the hall boards that are within Neehill County decided they wanted to get on this program, what would that cost us?
At this point, that's not something that we have determined because the numbers that we have calculated are based on the fact that we're already traveling to these Hamlets and visiting these sites as part of our rotation. And so, we've been able to accommodate those costs under the same structure. To look at other sites outside would be have to account for the additional time that we would have to bring staff in, and there would potentially be the limitation of capacity within the staff, especially should we've been dealing with a number of dry years, and so, our rotation is fairly manageable. If we come into a number of wet years, that rotation gets stretched, and so, then we see a drop in service level. At this point, it is something that we can bring back, what those costs would be, but it's not something that we have in front of us at this point.
Mr. Conken.
On the snow removal side of things, it would be very greatly dependent on the snowfall, obviously. If council moves forward with this, the Hamlet or the, sorry, the community centers would be put on a priority basis. Obviously, our roads need to be taken care of first, and then we would be coming back around to take care of the community centers, unless obviously there's funeral of some sort or something going on at those community centers that we know ahead of time that we can hopefully allocate extra staff, or not extra staff, just reallocate a per staff for that day to make sure that lot is cleared.
Mr. Gannon, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. I I just want to add to the comments made by Ms. Sherlock is, currently with the current staffing contingency, should we take on additional community centers? It would just increase the rotation duration. So, that may mean that some of the communities may be overgrown by the time we actually get back to them without adding additional resources or staffing to it. So, it all depends on the environment and the background with the actual equipment we have and the staffing, current contingency. So, I just, we could take on the work. It it just, the rotation would increase. And so, with the traveling costs, as we are traveling to other areas that potentially are are not calculated and we don't go to at this point. So, I just wanted to add that for some additional clarity.
So, again, just maybe to get this straight. So, if we stayed with the listed four, I think it's four, one, two, three, four, we're already in those Hamlets, so there wouldn't really be additional travel time for us. What it would be is additional mowing time. So, if we said our service level has to stay at a four-week rotation, then we're potentially looking at additional equipment and/or staff in order to make that happen. And on the snow removal side of things, my assumption would be based on the information that we have is that snow removal at the community centers would be not necessarily first priority, but would be like some of the others. It's at the end of the trail, is that correct? Mr. Conken.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, so, I guess sitting here right now, the question that really sits in my mind is around, do we want to reduce our service level across the county as a whole and go to a four-and-a-half-week rotation? If we don't want to do that and we want to take on the mowing that's required for these community centers, what would be the cost to Neehill County in equipment and possible manpower to make that change? So, I'm I'm sitting here going, I might want a little more information, just to flesh this out a little bit more. Two things, I think, in my mind is, one is the impact to go to four-and-a-half-week rotation and how that looks. I know once in four weeks, in a wet year, you're dealing with a hayfield rather than a lawn, and so, there's more time, et cetera, et cetera, involved there. So, and then, just if we decided, no, we got to be there at least every four weeks, then how do we do that? So, those are the two questions in my mind. So, council, Councilor Whitstock.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. When I total up the hours here, it comes in at less than five hours. I don't have any sort of an idea how much time is spent mowing the other cemeteries and the other responsibilities that we have. So, without that number, I don't know if five is outrageous or if it is within the ballpark. I I'm assuming this five hours is correct, but I, but again, I don't know how much time is spent on our other mowing programs. So, I don't know how it will affect. It seems kind of strange that, anyway, I guess I need more information also.
Okay. Any other comment from council? Currently, I'm, the direction I'm seeing is a request for more information and that this item came back to us. However, I'm kind of looking for a direction from council as a whole. Councilor Penner.
Through the, through Mr. Hogan, this RFD today is vegetation cutting at the Hamlet Community Centers. And you have outlined, Ms. Sherlock, the hours, which for Swallow, it's very reasonable because it takes us two hours with one mower and a weed whacker. That's just background knowledge, but I think you've been reasonable with the the number of hours. You haven't cut yourself short there in Swallow, that's what I'm thinking of. And if we have a request to council for the other community halls within, not community, sorry, you might as well say it's community halls, a rural halls, sorry. I think we should look at it then. That is something, like, it's a whole different RFD. But today's RFD is to do with cutting of community centers in our Hamlets that we're already at.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilor Penner. Okay, well, I guess I'm at the point where I'm looking for direction from council, and I guess I would be looking for either a motion that we are going to defer and ask for additional information or we are going to move forward with this request. Councilor Penner.
Just to make it clear in my mind here, what extra information are you requiring for this RFD?
Okay, so, again, just outline, I think my, the gaps for me are, the suggestion in the RFD is that if we decided to mow these four specific sites, that it takes our rotation from four weeks to four and a half weeks. And so, what I'm looking for is a suggestion on the impact of that change in service level and how it might affect us when we get there after four and a half weeks as opposed to four. And the other thing I'm interested in knowing is if as council, we decided based on that information that four and a half weeks was too long a rotation, then what would it cost to stay at a four-week rotation? So, if there's a feeling that we would need additional equipment to maintain that four-week rotation or there's a need for more staff to do that, then I would like to see that impact on what the financial on our side would be. And I guess the one other piece of information I might be interested in knowing is, if we chatted with these community halls and we outlined a cost, let's say, without the travel time, would they be willing to pay those prices? So, are we offering something that's not really out there or needed? Or is it really, would it be in demand? And is that something as council, then, that we might consider, you know, subsidizing in some way or at a full-cost recovery kind of approach? Councilor Penner.
Through the Reeve and Mr. Hogan, we've heard from two of these community halls over the last three years, I think you said, Ms. Sherlock. So, you want to put down to the four halls or are you talking rural halls to talk to them, too?
I am talking this specific RFD, which outlines four halls and four communities. So, Huxley, Wimbourn, Torrington, Swallow, that's all, that's all I'm talking about. Because what this RFD tells me, even though we're currently cutting Huxley Hall and Curling Rink, that if we add the Wimbourn Hall and Ball Diamond and the Torrington Hall and the Swallow Hall, that that changes our rotation from four weeks to four and a half. And that we either have to be happy with the change in the service level, which goes from four to four and a half weeks, or we have to say we're not happy with that, then we need to know what it costs us. Plus, one of these facilities that we're currently cutting is not incurring any cost. And so, if we went to them and said, now, we're going to charge you even $1,000 a year to do that mowing, how does that impact them? So, again, my question, have we talked to them to say, this is a change in service? This is what we're considering doing? And if two of the four are on board and the other two are not, are we still going to go ahead or are we not? And then, does our policy read it's based on a request from the community hall? And then, if we open that door, then that door might mean any community hall. So, for me, I don't have enough information at this point. I I'm looking for additional detail. Council comment. Mr. Councilor Christie.
My comment is Alberta weather's kind of not really predictable, you know? And I'd like to see it tried for a year and see how it goes and see what that, to me, to me, when you look at what, it's costing way more than $200 per cemetery per year, so we're subsidizing that very heavily. The community centers are used in our community for everybody, so I would be in favor of option four for a one-year trial, see where that goes, both on time and cost.
Okay, Councilor Forbes, thoughts?
I am like the Reeve as well. I would prefer to have this information because it does, it will affect the budget on whether or not we do four weeks or do four and a half. And I'm I'm also in the spot that if we do the four cuts and they are going to require more, they're going to be at full-cost recovery, in my opinion, because it's above what we would do. And we're we're going to be subsidizing this as it is already. We already subsidized the halls as a as a community because we love our halls. So, I'm looking at more subsidies going into something for our community. This hall gets used quite a bit, so I I don't have a lot of problems with Wimbourn because it is a very active community with their volunteers. It's just that, where does it stop? How do we prioritize what they get? And what does that look like if they're asking for something above the four cuts?
I'll come to you in a minute, Mr. Gannon, if you would hold that comment. Deputy Reeve, McGee.
I'm struggling with with the RFD because I know we're looking at just the four centers. And for me, I don't see it as simple as that. I think that's a component of how we do service level. But when you're a community center, you're not going to care that you're already there. You're going to care that four community centers are offered a service and I'm not. And I think that needs to be part of this RFD. So, for that reason, I would also like to have more information about how would we possibly manage that and justify it? And if we decided that we need to offer this service level to all centers, what's the, what's the outcome? I just, I'm I'm certain the feedback will be coming back. Why not our community center? You're plowing my road. You're mowing our ditches right past my community center. So, that's a part, because I really appreciate what you said, Councilor Penner, that according to this RFD, but that's where I'm struggling with where I stand with this RFD because I do think it has ramifications beyond what what it's addressing.
Councilor Whitstock, comment?
Oh, I was just playing with my iPad here, sorry.
Okay, I was just wondering if you had a comment on whether you feel you're ready to move forward or whether you're looking, I think you said earlier, you would like some more information, so I'm just confirming that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I would like some more information because like, like I stated, five hours, but currently, it's only, it'll only be four, even if all the other three jump in because we are doing Huxley already. I just don't know how much mowing or how much time it takes to mow, say, in Swallow, in Torrington, in Wimbourn, what like what we're committed. Swallow, in Torrington, in Wimborne, of what look like what we're committed to already as far as timelines mowing there. Because if we have to add an extra two hours to Wimborne and we're there for four, six hours already, then that means a special trip to come back to finish. I, I don't know how much time we spend in those communities. So therefore it makes it kind of hard to add two hours onto something. I mean, if you're only there for an hour and a half already, so yeah, it's not a big deal, you're not coming back. But you might end up having to come back to do something at Swallow because you've spent more time there. So I guess it just comes down to what are we doing, what's the, what's the timelines? And how is this going to affect it? Obviously, it's going to affect it by half a week, so.
Okay, uh, Counsel Cunningham, comment?
And no additional comments, but yeah, I'm, I would, I'd be looking for that extra information as well on the impact of.
And Counsel Penner?
Uh, just a couple of things. I agree with Counsel, so his, uh, Counsel Christie here, sorry. In order for the staff to find this information, do they have to give it a trial? And um, is that an option? Or if not, come spring, are we trying to have this in place by spring? Do we want this RFD to come back to us in a certain timeframe so that the coming year it can be offered? And if not, um, I think it's unfair that we have a community hall that's having it currently done at no charge and that should be brought to their attention um, with a, a certain timeframe. An, a understandable timeframe kind of thing, can't be just the overnight. Um, that they will be getting charged for it at the current rates in the ra- the bu- in the the rates chart, sorry.
Yep, master rates.
Master rates, that's it. So, and, but I do agree with Counsel Christie on um, having, by offering it for this year to the four, it gives some feedback to the staff, just my thoughts.
Okay, thank you for that. And Mister Gannon, you had a comment.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, from the information I gathered from council, um, we agree that uh, there's more questions that need to be answered uh, in order to give you some more fruitful uh, uh, opportunity to discuss the grander program uh, for all community centers. Uh, so should that motion uh, be needed by council, we'd be more than happy to bring that back uh, prior to the spring to ensure that uh, we can uh, express if we have the resources available or what that program may look like.
Okay, so based on what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that there is a majority that would like to maybe have more information. I'm hearing that um, we don't want that necessarily delayed any longer than necessary in terms of coming back to council. Uh, because there is a desire either to have a policy in place or at least potentially a trial of a mowing program in place in time for spring. So um, if I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that's enough information for administration to be able to bring back a more detailed breakdown on costs and what the estimated times would be. And um, the request I would be looking for at this motion point would be to uh, just a motion to ask administration to provide additional information. Counsel Phobes?
So moved.
So we have a motion from Counsel Phobes that uh, council directed administration to bring back further information on the vegetation uh, cutting at Hamlet Community Centers, um, RFD. Any last comment or discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Questions? If there are none, I am going to call a question. All those in favor? Opposed, a motion is carried. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Sherlock and Mister Conken. Backup is appreciated. And Ms. Sherlock, I guess you're staying here because we have one more. Five point, two point three, which is repeal of policy one dash thirty-two. Egg Service Board Administrative Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection. So Ms. Sherlock, whenever you're ready, please.
Absolutely. So yes, the next one I am bringing before you is to repeal policy uh, one dash two, three, one dash thirty-two, the ASB Administrative Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection. So originally this policy was created to maintain and provide direction for the operation of the pesticide container collection facility at the Three Hills Transfer Site. Um, the Provincial Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection Program has shifted from municipal collection sites to collection at the retailer locations. In January of twenty twenty-four, the Three Hills uh, Transfer Site Container Collection was closed by the provincial contractor Clean Farms due to this program shift. As such, this policy is no longer needed. At the November thirteenth ASB meeting, the board motioned to recommend to council to repeal policy one dash thirty-two. And currently, the Three Hills Transfer Site and the Drumheller uh, District Solid Waste Facility remain collection sites for recycling baling twine. Um, and clear baling twine are available at the admin office and transfer site. Um, advertising and communication regarding the changes in programming are continually ongoing. It's something we're uh, always putting out there. And um, we do find that we have people occasionally show up with those jugs and then we just direct them back to the retailer. So that uh, yeah, is a program shift and now uh, we no longer have that uh, container collection site, so.
Okay, so the recommendation is that we repeal policy one dash thirty-two, Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection. So what's the wish of council? Counsel Phobes?
I make the motion that we repeal policy one dash two-two ASB Administrative Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection.
Okay, so we have a motion that council repeal policy one dash three-two. The Egg Service Board Administrative Agricultural Pesticide Container Collection. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Penner?
Have you heard or had any feedback from residents that this is an inconvenience? Or, and, or have you heard from the road crews or the greater crews that they're the increase of jugs in the ditches? Again, I'm just, I'm just asking this because I sit on drum solid waste and we have different conversations with Clean Farms. So I just would like a little bit of feedback if you've heard from residents.
Ms. Sherlock?
Absolutely, through the reef. So directly, we have not received any direct feedback um, calling into the office. Um, I have not heard anything from the site um, facilitator in Three Hills. And at this point, we haven't found anything in the ditches. Um, we have had some jugs magically appear in the site. Um, and so uh, we are, are dealing with that and just trying to make sure that the correct information is being um, given out and, and that they're able to take those back. But uh, I do know that um, ourselves, uh, because where we get our county chemical from um, isn't a retail location, it's actually directly through a supplier. And so they, we have had to work with Clean Farms to arrange our own pickups. Um, one of the things that Clean Farms is able to do with some of the farms that have larger volumes is they're able to go directly to farm to pick that stuff up. Also, just speaking with our retailers in the area in coordinating our own pickup because we try to, the Clean Farms tries to do multiple sites in one location. Um, they've seemed to have adapted to getting those, those jugs back at the retail location. Um, I think it's a little bit of a logistical challenge for those who aren't set up for that. Um, but they're, they're figuring out solutions.
Okay, any other questions? Counsel Christie?
Just a comment for me, we buy chemical from multiple locations and at this point, nobody has refused to take them all. Like if we go back to UFA with all of them, they take, they don't ask where we bought that stuff. So that was one of my concerns is if retailers get to where they select, no, I didn't sell that, I'm not taking that. But at this point, they don't seem to have any restriction. If it's bagged and ready to go, they just take it.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Are there any other questions or discussion related to the motion to repeal the Agriculture Pesticide Container Collection? Policy? Okay, I'm not seeing any other question or discussion. So Counsel Phobes has made the motion that council repeal policy one dash three-two, which is the ASB Administrative Agriculture Pesticide Container Collection. I'm going to call a question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you, uh, Ms. Sherlock. And we are going to take a ten-minute recess. Actually, let's make it twelve minutes and we'll be back at nine fifty. So we're in recess.
Okay, it's 9:50 a.m. and I am going to call the council meeting back to order. And the next item on our agenda is 6.1, 2025 budget approval. And welcome, Ms. Von Merbach. And whenever you are ready, please.
Good morning, counsel. Today's presentation represents the sixth component of the 2025 budget process. Administration has prepared a presentation to provide an overview of the budget and the associated forecasts. The written report also contains several appendices to provide specific details of the budget being presented to council today for consideration of adoption. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to express my appreciation for all the internal staff who have contributed to the budget process. The budget requires significant collaboration and without all the hard work in the background, I wouldn't be able to do my job of facilitating the budget. In addition, I want to acknowledge the part that council plays in this process. Despite administration doing the legwork in the background, the budget is council's document and is your direction to administration on service levels, council's goals, and how to operate the county for the coming year. I firmly believe the document in front of you encompasses the goals of council and will enable administration to act on those goals in a manner that serves the ratepayers of this county. So before I get kind of into the full agenda, I'm just going to do a little bit of a highlight of how we got to today. Throughout the budget process, council's been provided with multiple iterations of information with which to make informed decisions and guide administration to bring forward the budget included in today's council package. On October 8th, we set the stage and did project introductions. This included setting the stage, including reviewing budget guidelines, financial comparators, and we also reviewed all proposed projects that were put forward for council consideration. During that meeting, administration collected questions from council on the proposed projects. Then we moved on to the October 22nd meeting where we presented the core operating budget. This reviewed the budgeted revenues and expenditures that aligned with existing service levels and fees as was included in the 2024 budget. Again, we collected questions to be able to respond back to those during November. At the November 12th meeting, we presented the third quarter variance report, which provided context as to the performance of the county compared to the 2024 budget as of September 30th and as forecasted to the end of the year. Then in both meetings in November, we presented council with responses to informations that had been requested during the budget process and facilitated discussions by council to balance the operating budget. Last week, on December 3rd, at the Committee of the Whole, administration provided council with additional information with respect to the historical trends of the budget, current trends, and the current state of the budget. This information was provided to facilitate further discussions from council regarding budget consideration items. The recommendations made in that meeting are included in the package of information being presented to council today. And then today, we're presenting a finalized 2025 budget for consideration of adoption by council. After today's meeting, administration will work to finalize the budget book for publication. As in the previous four years, the budget book is designed to meet or exceed all the criteria to obtain the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So throughout this process, administration and council has focused on some guiding principles within for the budget. There's actually a full document that has more information than just these guiding principles, but these are the key ones that we look to when we presented and developed the budget internally and as council worked towards finding a balanced budget. The first one is alignment with council's strategic plan. This ensures that administration considers council's priorities when developing both the core operating budget and proposed projects. We looked at sustaining existing service levels, which aim to ensure that the budget aligns with those service levels that have been set by council. We also looked at maintaining competitive tax rates. That's a recognition that council acknowledges that competitive tax rates are an important function of long-term viability of the county for both residential and non-residential growth. We also looked at reviewing and recommending adjustments to service fees and rates as necessary. This means that administration reviewed rates and fees to assure they align with comparative municipalities and with expenditure trends associated with various revenues and expenses. When we were prepared to adjust rates and fees with respect to balancing the budget. We also looked at continuing to implement and monitor a proactive infrastructure renewal strategy. Administration continues to work through the development and implementation of an asset management plan, which will enable the county to make more informed database decisions related to investment in asset repairs, rehabilitation, and replacement. This plan also ensures that the county is compliant with the guidelines as developed by the government of Alberta in the Guide for Municipal Asset Management Plans. This ensures that we'll be eligible to participate in future provincial and federal grant funding programs. This work also forms the basis for developing policies and structuring future capital and operating budgets. During this budget cycle, the capital equipment plan was presented as a standalone component of the budget in reflection of the progress towards the proactive infrastructure renewal strategy. Finally, we looked at enhancing the customer experience. This principle ensured that stakeholders were considered within operational and project plans. These guidelines provided administration with a formal set of guiding principles for the budget and the forecasting process. With these principles in place, administration worked towards the development of the 2025 budget. It's important to note that the budget continues to follow a rigorous budgetary process that is focused on containing costs and implementing best practices with the goal of demonstrating leadership in financial management. To support the lowest possible tax increase while maintaining service levels, administration established and followed a strict process to evaluate funding requests, utilized a thorough multi-layered review process, and reinforced priorities through business planning and best practices. So within today's presentation, we're going to look at an overview of the operating budget, an overview of the capital budget, and then take a quick peek at the financial forecasts, which have been previously presented to council as well, and then look at a few key takeaways from the budget process and the implications of some of the decisions that have been made. So first is the operating budget, which plans for the municipality's day-to-day revenues and expenditures. Both Appendix A and Appendix B within the written component of this present report relate to this section of the presentation. So the first component is looking at revenues, which are classified by various functions. There's been an increase of $1.9 million or 6.62%, primarily relating to an increase of property tax revenues, which reflects the end of the oil and gas tax holiday and revenue adjustments implemented in consideration of the ratepayer impact and requirements to balance the budget. In the following slides, I will provide an overview of the types of revenues included in each line of this schedule, and I will outline what has created any change in each revenue type. The first is licenses and permits with a total proposed budget of $120,100. This item relates to the Planning and Development Department. The increase has been based on trending in that department and anticipated revenues for 2025. Operating grants have a budget of $506,673. This item consists of operating grants distributed by the province and reflects the small increase reflects actual funds received in 2024. Other revenue has a total proposed budget of $81,100. There consists of revenues which don't fit into any other specific category, much of which relates to the Transportation Department relating to industry activity. There's only one revenue adjustment within this category, and it relates to water modeling fees for which the revenue budget has dropped from $10,000 to $6,100. The next item is the sale of goods and services with a total budget of $1,890,878. This includes revenues related to water lines, bulk water stations, tax notifications, dust control, oil field inspections, snow plowing, fire inspection fees, subdivision fees, custom spraying, weed inspections, park fees, and campgrounds. There are a few items within this function for which the budget of revenues have been adjusted. This includes a $55,000 increase to $180,000 of revenue related to dust control, a $59,811 increase related to bulk water revenues. Of this increase, $19,200 relates to a 30-cent increase in the per-cube rate, and the remaining increase is reflective of trending in the volumes purchased through our bulk fill stations. There's a $59,143 increase related to water distribution systems. $34,400 of that relates to a 20-cent increase in the per-cube rate, and the remaining increase is reflective of trending in the volumes distributed by county-owned systems. The increase in the per-cube rate for both bulk water and distribution systems is reflective of increased costs related to the operation of those systems. There are also some other small adjustments in the amount of $2,950, which is reflects adjustments across multiple departments, which are in line with actual revenues in recent fiscal cycles. Sales to other governments has a total budget of $201,370 and includes management fees paid to the county and service agreements with neighboring municipalities. A planned contract with carbon for management services is reflected with a $75,000 increase in this line item. And enforcement contracts have seen a $6,000 decrease related to actuals in recent years. Then there's rental income with a total proposed budget of $141,000. It contains revenues related to the rental of buildings owned by the county, as well as income from the snow plowing of laneways and small increases relates to existing rental contracts. We then move on to penalties and fines, which has a total proposed budget of $83,000. This includes penalties and fines related to taxes, utility billings, and enforcement services. The penalties for taxes, the budget has decreased by $5,000 to $70,000. This is based on trending in property tax penalties, primarily related to the updates in the actual bylaw in terms of how the county levies penalties on taxes. There's also peace officer fines have decreased by $4,000 to $7,000, which is based on historical trending for this revenue item. Property taxes have a total proposed budget of $27,710,295. This item represents the net municipal portion of all property taxes collected by the county and is the item which represents the majority of revenues for the county. An increase of $1,208,636 reflects anticipated revenues, which will be received in relation to the ending of the oil and gas tax holiday. The remaining $815,167 relates to revenue adjustments on property taxes, including a 4% increase for residential, a 5% increase for farmland, and a 2.7% increase for non-residential. As well, there's an increase for the minimum tax rate to go from $150 to $175. Tax adjustments were discussed by council in consideration of the impact on ratepayers. In addition, attempts were made to work to decrease the five-to-one ratio, which is related to non-residential and tax rates, as it was maxed out at 4.99 to 1 in 2024. I will also note that those revenue adjustments are what we're proposing and based on the information we have available related to assessment. So those amounts may shift when the actual tax rate bylaw comes back to council in the spring and we'll actually have finalized assessment numbers, we'll know the amount of revenue we're intending to levy, and we'll be able to adjust those mill rates in alignment with the assessment and the amount that's been included in the budget for property taxes. One of the things that could happen there is the amount that we brought in in relation to the ending of the oil and gas tax holiday was an estimate on our end, and so that could fluctuate that assessment in a way that allows some fluctuation in those rates. But that's what we've budgeted based on those amounts increased, based on the information available as today's date. Next is special taxes in frontage, which has a total budget of $248,985. This represents special tax levies related to taxable parcels of land with water connections, as well as the Trosheer Recreation Levy. Revenues related to the Trosheer Recreation Levy have increased by $12,736, which is in alignment with rates set out in the 2024 property tax bylaw. Again, I'll note this is one where we collect the revenues and we pay the same amount out in expenditures each year. In addition, there's the expiry of one water levy, which has resulted in a decrease of $57,338 for this item. And again, is reflected, there's a decrease in the amount contributed to reserves because the county collects those amounts and contributes them straight back into reserves to fund long-term needs for the water infrastructure. Return on investments has a total budget of $766,784. This item has not been decreased in line with the initial reserve strategy presented to council in October of 2023. This is reflective of the fact that anticipated investment returns will continue to exceed this amount and will be contributed to reserves in alignment with the initial reserve strategy recommendations. Transfer from reserves has a total budget of $277,650. This draw represents the amount withdrawn from reserves in order to balance the budget. And there's capital equipment plan sales, which has a budget of $100,000. This line item has been maintained at that standard $100,000. A corresponding contributions to reserves under the expense section has been budgeted for the same amount, resulting in no bottom-line impact to the budget from capital equipment plan sales. As council recalls, we typically, when we get an amount over that, we then fund that back, put that back into reserves through motion during quarterly variance reporting. That summarizes all of the revenues within the 2025 budget. Next is looking at expenditures, which have also increased by that same $1.9 million or 6.6% and reflects numerous adjustments within expenditure functional categories. The first one is contract goods and services with a total budget of $3,554,017. This item includes things such as legal fees, engineering fees, software licensing, the assessment contract, training and development, audit fees, freight, equipment rental, contracted maintenance and repairs, insurance, recycling programming, garbage collection, alarm monitoring, public land mowing, and advertising. Items that have fluctuated within this category include a $45,625 decrease in professional fees, an $18,180 decrease in minor operating projects, a $10,000 decrease in public land mowing, which is reflective of the contract in 2024, a $10,000 decrease in inspection services, a $5,000 decrease related to contracted equipment and vehicle repairs. And then there's a $68,569 increase in IT contracts. And then there's a $68,569 increase in IT contracts, a $49,960 increase related to training and development. This includes all costs related to training and development, including travel, meals, memberships, training, and registration fees. It also includes organizational-wide training, such as first aid. So $31,500 increase for advertising and PR, which includes some costs related to updating branding from the old county logo. There's a $25,967 increase in waste collection and urban garbage site expenses, an $18,000 increase for election expenses, to reflect that 2025 is a municipal election year, a $13,947 increase related to various minor expense fluctuations across all departments, a $10,926 increase for contracted building repair costs, a $10,859 increase for insurance, and a $9,000 increase for council training and development. Next, we look at materials, goods, supplies, and utilities, which has a total budget of This item includes things such as fuel, utilities, printing and stationery, small tools, maintenance shop supplies, equipment repair parts, road maintenance supplies, water for resale, and weed control chemicals. There are several fluctuations resulting in the increase in this item, and they include a $38,500 increase for shop supplies, which support the maintenance of the county's capital equipment, a $6,500 decrease for small tools and equipment. Like I said, $38,500 increase for shop supplies, it's actually a decrease. Then there's an $86,503 increase for water for resale, to a total of $1,4080. This includes water purchase to support both bulk water sales and water distribution systems. There's a $31,200 increase for general supplies. This includes supplies for various departments, and reflects many small adjustments across different GL accounts. There's a $27,447 increase for utilities, a $22,437 increase for supplies related to environmental services, which supports water and waste management systems, a $13,000 increase for safety supplies, and a $13,000 increase for fuel. Next, we have salaries, wages, and benefits, which has a total budget of $11,497,974. This item includes all costs associated with all employees of council of the county, as well as remuneration of council. The increase in this item includes a $21,291 decrease in seasonal staff wages, a $635,962 increase, which reflects decisions made by council entering 2024 to align staff with the 50th percentile as compared to market. It also includes the decision by council to hire an economic development manager, which was not accounted for in the 2024 budget. It includes merit adjustments for 2025, and a market adjustment to maintain the 50th percentile going into 2025. There's also a $222,162 increase related to government contributions, that includes WCB, CPP, EI, as well as group benefits. Then there's the $145,000 increase, which relates to the Planned Management Services contract with Carbon, of which half of that amount is anticipated to be collected through the village as a revenue. Next, we have provision for allowances, which has a proposed budget of $100,000. This item relates to tax write-offs for uncollectible taxes. It has been budgeted at 2024 levels, as there is anticipation that there will be some volume of tax write-offs, but no increase or decrease is warranted. Purchases for other governments has a total proposed budget of $784,900. This includes land title fees, solid waste collection, the operation of water lines, and the payment to the province for policing costs. Land title fees have decreased by $500, and payments to the Drumheller Waste Commission have increased by $39,180, which is in alignment with the 2024 payment and the anticipated 2025 payment. Transfers to other governments has a total budget of $763,346. This includes expenses for which agreements are in place with neighboring municipalities. Transfers to urban municipalities have increased by $90,461, and payment of the Trosheu Recreation Levy has increased by $12,736. Again, that's in alignment with the amounts included in 2024, and the associated revenues have been increased by the same amount. Transfers to individuals and organizations has a total budget of $321,700. This includes programming, which supports rural community halls, youth sponsorships, community grants for nonprofits, scholarship awards, and other various council programs. There's a contingency decrease of $50,000. This item has not been included in the budget, but it has been historically, and it hasn't been utilized to the extent it would be anticipated to, so administration removed that from the budget this year. We do acknowledge that there would be alternative funding sources if something comes up that that funding would typically be used for. There's a decrease of $250 related to the doctor recruitment and retention payments, a $100 decrease related to the Neehill Regional Partnership, a $50,804 increase related to the medical clinic rent stabilization payment, an increase of $5,000 for payments to urban fire halls, an increase of $4,500 for ASB grant programs, and an increase of $600 for council-supported community grant programs. Then we have transfers to local boards and agencies, which has a proposed budget of An increase of $13,386 is to support FCSS, and an increase of $1,228 is for access to the Marigold Library System. Contributions to reserves has a total budget of $9,280,648. These transfers relate to funding for long-term capital infrastructure purchases and maintenance, as well as balancing of the budget. A decrease of $57,338 relates to the expiry of one water system special tax levy, and an increase of $505,112 reflects increased contributions to the Capital Equipment Plan Reserve, which is in alignment with the asset management strategy for capital equipment. There's also an increase of $716, which is required to support IT infrastructure. Finally, within expenditures, there's gravel projects, which has a total proposed budget of $750,000. This item represents funding to crush gravel to maintain stockpiles for road maintenance. That concludes my component on the operating budget. Are there any questions on that before I move on to the capital and project budget?
Okay, so, yeah, I think this would be a good time to take questions, if there's specific questions related to the operating side of the budget. Councilor Phobes, please.
Through the chair to CIO Hogan. It's about the election budget. I see every year you put in $3,000 for that, and then this year it's going to be 21,000. Can you just give me an explanation as to why we do that?
Mr. Hogan.
So through the chair, there's a small amount included in every given year, just in case there's the requirement for a by-election or anything of that nature. The full-on election, which we know requires a lot more resource, is what you're seeing reflected in the 2025 budget.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Have we lost Mr. Whitstock?
He's coming back.
I guess I have a couple of questions. The increase in council training this year is due to the fact we have an election year, so that additional monies we're putting in there is because of the orientation and other training that the new council will receive.
Through the chair, that's correct. So we're anticipating a number of the training opportunities that council took when you first started and throughout the term, that we're going to be seeing those again.
The other question I had was with regard to sales to other governments, or purchases, sorry, purchases from other governments. In our budget, we have $784,900. In the items that are listed here, there was $1,000 specific to, now I lost it here. Here it is, specific to land titles, and an adjustment of $39,180 for a total of $254,000 to the Drumheller Waste Commission. It's my assumption, then, the remaining $529,990 are policing costs? Or is that just a portion of the?
Through the chair, that is close to the amount. If something's not reflected in those slides, it means the budget hasn't changed in the year from last year to this year. But the majority, I think, $487,000 is policing, I believe, if I'm correct?
Okay, so, yeah, I just wanted to have on record, I guess, that the policing cost is the same as last year, but we're anticipating about $180,000 increase next year, and you're saying it's around $487,000? Mr. Hogan, would that be close, or are you looking for that specifically?
Through the chair, we would have to look at the exact number, but that $480, $487,000 would be very close.
And then I had one other question, and this is for you, Mr. Hogan, specifically related to the revenue side of our budget, which around water distribution and water distribution systems, and the money that we are losing in our water system levies. And I'm just wondering if we might be seeing coming forward from administration a policy developed around developing long-term reserves for infrastructure maintenance and/or replacement that would potentially replace the levies that are there currently. So is there some thought being given to policy development around how we're going to maintain or have money in place long-term for those water systems?
Through the reeve, there is. So the costling model is actually currently in development right now with, from our staff. So once that's complete, then council will see that discussion come back to you for direction. So in terms of development of a specific policy, that's a bit further down the road. There'll be questions that we pose to you around that costling, around what level of subsidy council we wish to provide different options for establishing long-term funding. From those, we'll look to craft, whether that's a policy or some other mechanism. Those, that's being generated, and that discussion is coming to you shortly.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess the reason I'm asking is we've all had the, I'm not going to use the word enjoyment, but we've all seen what's happened in the city of Calgary this last year in terms of their infrastructure related to water. And certainly, as a corporate entity, we want to be prepared if something like that was to happen within our municipalities, so. Okay. Are there any other questions? Councilor Cunningham?
And I know I've asked this before, but I get asked it all the time. Has the province given us clear confirmation that we will be receiving our oil and gas tax holiday money back? 100% confirmed, no ifs, ands, or buts.
Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through the chair, the Minister of Municipal Affairs has clearly communicated on several occasions that the oil and gas tax holiday is coming to an end.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions from council to this point in the presentation? I am not seeing any, so Ms. Von Merbach, if you want to continue forward.
Thank you. The next section focuses on the capital and the project budget. The capital budget plans to purchase and finance assets and improve and maintain existing infrastructure. This section also includes projects which are not capital in nature, but support the long-term sustainability of the county, and are also funded by reserves. While this section provides an overview of what is being presented for consideration for approval today, Appendix C includes a detailed list of all the projects included within the 2025 budget. So within the proposed projects, there's some key investments that have been made. $5.2 million relates to maintaining the road and bridge network. This includes $2.4 million for rural road reconstructions, $1.8 million for road restructuring, and $820,000 related to bridges. There's $5.1 million in capital equipment plan replacements. These replacements were approved in September in alignment with the asset management recommendations. And included within those replacements are two fire brush trucks, one fire engine, two graders, a loader, a crack sealer, seven light-duty trucks, three medium-duty trucks, a semi-trailer, a utility trailer, and a gravel trailer. There's $1.2 million related to water distribution systems, $726,000 for Wimbourn groundwater filtration upgrades, $291,000 for Hamlet of Huxley wastewater upgrades, and $198,000 for pump house updates. There's $650,000 related to economic development, $330,000 relates to site selection and design for Horseshoe Canyon in response to the adoption of the Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan. There's $180,000 related to Horseshoe Canyon Area Structure Plan, $88,000 in studies to provide data for long-term economic development plans, and $52,000 in operating initiatives to support economic development activities. There's also $400,000, $470,000 for studies and plans to support long-term service levels in infrastructure. These include $253,000 to investigate future gravel sources and their viability, $110,000 for a parks and recreation needs assessment, $71,000 for a Horseshoe Canyon Trail project plan, and $33,000 for public engagement related to the land use bylaw.
So, Councilor Phobes, you had a question?
Yes, you mentioned the Horseshoe Canyon Trail. I believe at the Cal meeting, we've taken that out.
Through the chair, that is correct. That note didn't get updated, which explains why on my slide it says $470,000, and my notes it says 400, and then I didn't delete that bullet. You are correct, that is not included in the project budget. That was my oversight, my apologies.
Oh, that's good clarification. We just wanted to be, so thank you for that. A number of ears perked up when they heard that one, so.
Absolutely.
So if you want to continue, please.
So with that, this slide just summarizes the total projects that are put forward. It has the different categories of projects. It also acknowledges, so of the total project budget of $13,269,780, $5,120,000 relates to those capital equipment plan purchases, which were previously approved by council in September. There's $6,466,780 relates to projects that are in front of council today that are planned to be funded through reserves. And then there's $1,683,000 related to projects that are intended to be funded through the LGFF Grant Fund. Within that, those projects, there was $140,180 that affected the 2025 operating budget, and is included in the operating budget that I just spoke to. There's potential future project costs of $15,815,200. Again, those are forecasted costs, those are not being approved in today's budget, but they are associated with projects that are being approved in today's budget. And then there's a projected impact of 2026 of $169,140, so only an incremental $29,000 based on this year's effect on the 2025 budget versus what we anticipate will affect 2026 related to projects approved this year.
Question, Councilor Phobes, please.
Through the chair, this is for Mr. Hogan. So in the vehicles, we, on our Cal meeting, decided we weren't going to move forward with the fourth peace officer for this year. The vehicle in your capital equipment, that council's decision was on September the 24th, is one of those vehicles listed there, the CPO vehicle?
Through the chair, the vehicle for the proposed fourth officer was part of the fourth officer program. It was never put forward or approved as part of the capital equipment plan that was approved on September 24th.
Clarification, Councilor Phobes?
Yeah, I'm just a little confused, because when you brought forward that position, it had a price tag of, I want to say, $150,000, but I never saw the vehicle attached to that. So that's where my confusion is lying right now.
Okay, Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, we would have to go back and visit the slides, but I know in the presentation, it did include a capital component for the vehicle, plus an operating component of $150,000 for the officer-related IT fuel, all the stuff that goes into that. So we'd have to find that specific slide, but I do know that it was included in there, both costs. For what was presented for the preapproval on the capital equipment plan, that vehicle was never part of what was put forward as part of that plan, and it was not approved by council.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah. Yeah, Councilor Phobes, please.
Uh, through the chair, to the CAO, can you just explain to me, in this one that I'm looking at from the September twenty-fourth meeting, um, there's a half-ton pickup truck for nine thousand dollars? How are you buying a truck for nine thousand dollars, please?
Uh, through the chair, I, through the chair, if, um, I'll, I'll answer that, and I might defer that to, uh, to the presenter of Aethosorn, uh, but I believe that's part of our pilot project where we're renting some vehicles. And attempting to see if that is going to prove to be more cost-effective than buying in the future. So that is a, a pilot project that we've just started. Uh, we anticipate that running for a couple of three years to gather data.
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions at this point? And I don't have a question so much as a comment, and again, I guess it's to you, uh, Mr. Hogan. In the list on Appendix C, and in the list on Appendix E, we talk about the Horseshoe Canyon Interpretive Center and washroom. And it's not indicated in either of those locations that this is a feasibility study and a planning process. And so that contributes to sort of the confusion that exists in the public around what is being spent and what's being approved for Horseshoe Canyon. So I guess my request would be is, when we finalize and this information is disseminated to the public, that we make it very clear that this is a study or a planning process that we're engaged in and not an actual construction process.
Through the chair, we can make that, uh, we can make that adjustment to make that more clear. Uh, those projects are, are planning and pre-engineering, and of course, they're based on decisions that council has yet to make. So we will, uh, we'll look at the wording and how that's presented in the final budget book, and we'll ensure that there's more clarity around that.
Yeah, and my comment is, it just, it leaves it open to interpretation, and I think we just need to clarify, so it's not misunderstood in any way, shape, or form. So if you, that could be done, I appreciate it. Councilor Cunningham, please.
I was going to save this one for later, but you've just opened that up, uh, Mr. Reeve. But, so when we, like, I know the MGA requires us to do that kind of forecasting, right? So further to the Reeve's question, so I know Thursday, we're doing like a Horseshoe Canyon visi- visioning workshop. So when we're doing that workshop, are we taking that six million, like, I, I know it's not, like, it's in the forecast, it's not approved in budget, but are we going into that workshop saying we have six point one potentially million dollars to work with?
Mr. Hogan?
Uh, through the chair, the short answer to that is no. Um, the forecast is simply a forecast. Uh, we've, as has been presented to council previously, uh, that determination as to what that number will actually be going forward is going to be pending the upcoming discussions that, that council has. So that, uh, that process that we're going into later this month is actually related to the 2024 feasibility project that was approved by council in this year's budget. So determining on where council lands, what the council wants to achieve, there'll be a number of options put forward in front of, to council with different cost levels that, uh, council will be able to assess and make a decision on from that point.
Okay, thank you for that. And just, uh, further to, uh, Councilor Phobes' question earlier, um, looking back in the presentations that, um, were here on budget around that fourth CPO, there's slides in the October eighth and November twenty-sixth presentations which show both capital costs for the vehicle and operating costs, salary benefits, computer operations, et cetera, for that fourth peace officer. So, um, as council, if we went back and reviewed those, we could find that information. October eighth and November twenty-sixth, I believe, so. Okay? All right. So, I think I don't see any more questions at this point, so, Ms. Von Merbach, if you would want to continue, please do that.
Thank you. Um, so that concludes this component on the twen- on the actual 2025 budget that's being put forward for council consideration today. Um, my next component just looks at a quick highlight of the project or the forecasts. So during the, um, October eighth council meeting, we reviewed the 2026 to 2030 project forecast, and on the October twenty-second meeting, we looked at the 2026 to 2028 operating forecast. Um, so this, this, this section of the presentation represents a high-level review of those forecasts. Um, the full ones can be found in Appendix D and E within the associated report for today. So just, um, the intent of forecasts, um, the, forecast included in today's report are in compliance with the MGA requirement for council to adopt three-year operating and five-year capital forecasts annually. The five-year project forecasted, again, was presented on October eighth, and the operating forecast was presented on October twenty-second. These plans and forecasts aren't required under provincial regulations to be fully funded when council reviews and adopts them. Um, the operating forecast can be presented in either a surplus or a deficit position. These forecasts are really intended to provide council with a forward-looking view of upcoming financial challenges and opportunities facing the municipality. The operating forecast identifies upcoming financial considerations, which will be addressed in future budget deliberations, um, and it represents anticipated revenues and expenditures associated with providing the same levels of service that have been included in the 2024 operating budget. These forecasts, again, are not budgets, and they don't provide administration with the authority to spend any of those forecasted funds. So within the operating forecast, again, the detail can be found in Appendix D in the report today. Um, the 2025 budget is shown as about, in a balanced position. In 2026, we're looking at a seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar shortfall based on the forecasted numbers, a one point four million dollar shortfall in 2027, and a two point one million dollar shortfall in 2028. Um, so these shortfalls aren't cumulative, so, for example, the forecasted shortfall of two point one million dollars in 2028 is the total shortfall anticipated as compared to the 2025 budget. And again, this is based on the information we have available to today's date. Provincial policies can affect those changes in levels of service as directed by council can affect those, they're the amounts that we're forecasting based on the information we have currently available to today. Then we look at the project forecast. Um, so again, this includes items that are both capital and, um, operating project for, um, type in nature, but they're all projects that are anticipated to be not funded through the operating budget, but funded through reserves or, um, other grant programming. And again, the detail for this can be found in Appendix E. Um, so it includes, there's various categories that are included in this, um, graph. In-progressed phase projects represent projects which have been initiated during the 2024 or 2025 budget process and have future co- associated costs forecasted. Then there's maintenance of existing assets, which represents maintenance of assets which are required to maintain existing service levels, but are not or will not be performing as required. There's replacement of existing assets, uh, which represents the replacement of assets which have reached the end of their useful life and which are required to maintain existing service levels. There's the capital equipment plan, which represents replacements of capital equipment. There's new assets, which represent assets which aren't currently within the county's a- asset base, which but are anticipated to be requested to maintain service levels. There's operating projects, um, which represent items which aren't capital in nature, but either ensure administration is able to maintain existing service levels and/or facilitate and progress council's strategic plan. Then there's new initiatives, which represent new programming, which, if approved, would be included in the core operating budget in future years. This includes new staffing requests, as well as changes to service levels or financial strategies.
And, uh, through you, Mr. CAO Hogan, um, again, just to clarity that these are forecasts, nothing here is approved or, uh, expected to be without, uh, fulsome discussion here at council.
Through, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Um, the pur- the purpose of the forecast, um, as per the MGA, is to give an idea of what might be coming down the road. And so wanting to make sure that governance decisions are not just focused on today, but also focused on what's going to happen tomorrow, um, providing some clarity and planning around, to enable better decision-making. So again, those are refined each year, um, but we know that costs change, scopes of projects change, or get canceled, those types of things. So this gives an idea of discussions and potential costs coming down the road to council, but all of it is pending further discussion and approvals.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, I would say, go ahead, uh, please, Ms. Von Merbach.
Okay, so this final section highlights some key impacts related to budget decisions made by council throughout the budget process, and it also overviews the recommended motions within, main, contained within the written component of this report. So some of, um, 2025 council deliberations focused on managing the budget shortfall in alignment with council's previously adopted budget guidelines, and in a manner that supports the long-term financial sustainability of the organization. The identified strategy sought to find balance between the impacts of maintaining existing service levels while ensuring effective management of county assets, with the commitment to set tax rates that are both competitive and appropriate for ratepayers. This slide represents a summary of the key decisions made by council during the previous five budget meetings. There's a transfer of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars from the revenue stabilization reserve to balance the budget and mitigate the budget impact on ratepayers. There's an increase of twenty cents per cube of water sold through water distribution systems, an increase of thirty cents per cube of water sold through bulk water fills. Again, both of those increases are in direct reflection of increased costs required to maintain that sys- those systems. There's an increase of the minimum annual, annual property tax from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. There's an increase of property tax revenues as consider, and with consideration of the impact on ratepayers and for the five-to-one ratio limitations. There's a four percent revenue increase for residential properties, a five percent revenue increase for farmland, and a two point seven-five percent revenue increase for non-residential. Again, I will note that these are revenue adjustments, not necessarily mill rate adjustments, and they are what are recommended and what we have based on the information we have available at today's date. So the budget includes a total amount to be levied from taxes, and when we come forward with the tax rate bylaw, these adjustments will be what is the basis for the starting point of developing and adopting that tax rate bylaw, um, depending on what assessments might have, um, fluctuations in assessment that might happen when we actually receive those final numbers. There might be some fluctuations in those specific numbers and those specific revenue changes. Um, and in fact, in prior years, oftentimes, a four percent revenue increase for residential properties is actually meant a reduction in the mill rate because of how fast the assessment has grown based on market. Um, so again, these are revenue adjustments within the budget, they are not actually mill rate adjustments at this point in time, they're just recommendations to move forward when we get the assessment numbers and bring the tax rate bylaw forward to council. There's also a deferral of three hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars related to proposed projects. With those adjustments in mind, there's, um, as council has been considerate of in the last several week budget cycles, is the impact of the average residential ratepayer and the people who live within the county borders. Um, again, final assessment numbers are received in late February, um, but the tax adjustments made within the 2025 budget are a consideration for the total change in taxation revenue. Council identified revenue adjustments that aim to maintain alignment with the tax permissible, the ratio of five-to-one, um, as defined by the MGA, and also supporting an improved allocation of tax burden across classes. While the individual impacts on homeowners will be dependent on their assessed values, the typical hamlet home will see an increase of about thirty-eight dollars annually related to taxes. Acreages will see an annual increase of approximately nearly ninety-one dollars, and farmland increases for a quarter section are approximately forty-seven dollars annually. Again, these increases were recommended after council and administration worked to manage expenditures in response to inflationary pressures and maintaining of service levels. There's also a water rate impact. To maintain the water services cost recovery ratio, council brought forward that increase of twenty cents per cube of water sold through water distribution systems, and an increase of thirty cents per cube for bulk water. The average impact for a ratepayer who utilizes a water connection will be approximately thirty-two dollars and forty cents annually. Um, not represented on this slide, but some additional information.
I have a question here. Councilor Christie, you have a question?
Just a comment on your forty-six dollars and eighty-three cents for an assessed quarter at thirty thousand. If you put that back to market value, wouldn't you be conservative at seven hundred thousand? That's like six dollars and seventy cents to relate it back to acreages of the same assessment value.
Okay.
We're basing the acreages on an assessment value of a hundred thousand dollars. It's, the assessment value on acreages is way closer to market value, where farmland tax is not based on market value in any way, shape, or form, is the comment.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, sorry, I wasn't catching clearly what you were saying, but I appreciate that clarification, thank you. Any other comment or question at this point? If not, uh, Ms. Von Merbach, if you would like to continue.
Thank you. Um, I just also have a little bit of information in terms of the impact for bulk water users. Um, again, council would see, have seen this on the dashboard throughout the last few budget meetings. Um, for bulk water users who utilize low volumes, which is approximately ninety percent of accounts, the annual impact of that increase is between twenty-two dollars and a hundred and twelve. Um, for moderate volume users, which make up another six percent of accounts, the annual impact is between a hundred and twelve and two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And then for high-volume users, which are all industrial users, um, the impact is upwards of that two hundred and ninety-two dollars. With all that said, um, there are five motions included within the RFD. Take A, they include approval of the 2025 operating budget included in Appendix A, approval of the transfers from reserves and contributions to reserves, as well as operating, um, and grants, as detailed in Appendix B. There's the 2025 capital and project budget, as detailed in Appendix C, and approval of the operating and cap, project forecasts in Appendix D and Appendix E.
Okay. So are there any additional questions? Um, there's a number of motions that we would need to make in order to, um, move forward and approve the budget for 2025, as we have been in conversation about for a length of time. Uh, Deputy Reeve McGee?
Could you just give some clarity on why our minimum, minimum tax rate is charged? What it's pu- what's its purpose? Um, I have some people who have more than one lot, and they find a constant increase that we've been doing over the years hard to digest, so I just want to have a good answer for them for that.
Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Municipalities will charge, uh, many of them, charge minus, uh, charge minimum tax rates to, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is to ensure that just the process of sending out the tax bill or collecting taxes doesn't result in a loss, in a loss of revenue. Um, I can, I can go back earlier in my career in other municipalities where we didn't have this in place at the time, and we were sending out tax bills for eighty-seven cents or a dollar thirty-two. We were literally losing money trying to collect taxes. So a lot of municipalities will put in a minimum tax rate to make sure that at the very least, uh, the costs associated with collecting those taxes are covered. The other component of the minimum tax rate is generally put in place to ensure that there is some meaningful contribution to services that are, that are offered to residents. So a lot of places have a much lower tax rate, they're not, they're not covering that, it's more token in, uh, in nature. Um, ours is higher than most, and then it, but it is still a, what I would say, a token amount in terms of the services received, like grading the roads in front of those properties and, and other items. So it's meant to help offset that, never actually does, um, but it is meant to put towards there. Uh, for any individuals that have multiple lots, um, even though the same individual or entity, if it's a corporation is an example, even though they own those lots, uh, they still have multiple lots that are receiving that service. So there is a, if, if you're, if a person is going to own multiple lots, um, or a company, um, they're either, if they are, say, conducting an activity such as agriculture on those lots, there's still a use of county services related to those lots, uh, the roads to access them and, and ditches and so forth. Um, if they're taking, the other common example would be an individual in, say, a hamlet or, or that type of area that has a second lot. They're choosing not to develop it and use it as a yard or something like that, there is still services attached to that lot, or, um, which are not being heavily accrued by the municipality, because there isn't the assessment that you would see from a house or other type of development on that lot. So it is an added cost of ownership to have your bigger yard, or whatever the case may be, in, in those areas. So it does vary a little bit by, uh, the use of that property, but the general intent of the minimum tax rate is to help cover costs associated with the lot, regardless of the ownership of that lot.
Uh, Deputy Reeve McGee, follow-up?
Just want to say thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. All right, any other question or comment, um, direction from council? Direction from council regarding the requests that we approve the 2025 operating budget. I would be looking for motions to move forward if that's the wish of council. Counselor Christie.
Through the Reeve, I'd make the motion to approve the 2025 operating budget in the amount of 32,127 dollars. 127,000 dollars, 835 as detailed in appendix A.
Okay, so thank you, Counselor Christie. We have a motion that the 2025 operating budget in the amount of 32,127,835 dollars. As detailed in appendix A be approved. Are there any questions or discussion to that motion? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I just want to thank again all of our staff who've contributed to putting together this information. And reiterate the fact that it's clear to me that you've taken all the documents, all our policies, all our wishes that we've given you in the last year specifically. But also way beyond that way beforehand. And so this is a continuum discussion that happens quite frankly at every council meeting that is accumulated into the budget. And I think you've reflected what I understood we've been saying for the last 12 months quite well. And so therefore I will be supporting this motion.
Okay, thank you for that. So again. Really, this is a culmination of a long and lengthy conversation around this budget. And I do have to like the deputy Reeve say thank you to everyone. I know Ms. Von Merbach, you're the one sitting in front of us getting all the accolades, but we know it's not just you. But you need to understand it's greatly appreciated. And if you'd pass that message along, it would also be appreciated. So thank you. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion that the 2025 operating budget in the amount of 32,127,835 dollars. As detailed in appendix A be approved. I'll ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. There are a number of other motions that we are going to need to make in order to finalize this conversation. So what is council's wish? Deputy Reeve McGee.
Again, there's no surprises here. This has been a long-range plan that we've been following and and predictable and which become more obvious as we get practiced in that forecasting. Because a lot of these things that you've said, we've known were going to be coming forward. Because it's consistent to what council has approved prior as far as plans go and requests and directions. So having said that, I look forward to looking at the motion, make the motion that the 2025 operating budget transfers from reserves. And contributions to reserves as detailed in appendix B be approved.
Okay, thank you for that. So we're bringing out of reserves into this budget and we're sending back money into reserves. Total contribution to reserves in the budget is 9,280,648 dollars for future. Projects and planning and to cover any unforeseen circumstances. So we do have a motion from Deputy Reeve McGee. That the 2025 operating budget transfers from reserves and contributions to reserves as detailed in appendix B be approved. And so is there any discussion to that? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. There are two other motions that we need to have in order to finalize the 2025 budget process. Counselor Penner.
I make the motion that the 2025 capital and project budget and funding sources in the amount of 8,149. Oh, 8,149,780 dollars as detailed in appendix C be approved.
Okay, thank you for that. So again, this is the result of a conversation that's been ongoing for quite some time. And so this motion from Counselor Penner would approve the 2025 capital and project budget. And the funding sources in the amount of 8,149,780 dollars as detailed in appendix C. And that be approved. Any discussion to that? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And we have one last motion to finalize the process. Deputy Reeve McGee.
Recognizing that an operating forecast is just our best thoughts with the information we have today. Recognizing information will continue to come in and could change this, but this is a requirement to do. And and so therefore I'd like to make the motion that the 2026 to 2028 operating forecast as in appendix D. And the 2026 to 2030 project forecast as in appendix E be approved.
Okay, so thank you for that motion, Deputy Reeve McGee. So we need to acknowledge that these operating forecasts and the project forecasts are just that forecast. They're best guesses to what the future might be and are subject to a lot of discussion prior to approval and or change prior to that. So we do have the motion as required. We are to provide these forecasts. And so Deputy Reeve McGee has made the motion that the 2026 to 2028 operating forecast, appendix D. And the 2026 to 2030 project forecast, appendix E be approved. Any discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. So again, Ms. Von Merbach, just thank you. This has been a long process and you've been patient and helpful throughout that process. And everyone who stands behind you has done the same, so we very much appreciate that. And so thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to suggest we take a recess. We are going to be in recess for 10 minutes and so we'll be back at 11:05. So we are in recess. Okay, it's 11:05 and so I'm going to call our council meeting back to order. And the first item on our agenda is Rural Resident Connection Grant 7.1. And Ms. Vanekul, you will be taking this one, I assume?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Reeve. So the Rural Resident Connection Grant is a new policy that council approved last year. The policy is attached to this report. The purpose of the grant is to encourage residents to engage in local activities and promote social connections, inclusion and well-being by providing them financial support for their events. A resident from Torrington has applied for a $600 grant to help cover the costs of hosting a Robbie Burns night at the end of January. The project meets all eligibility requirements. The applicant is a Neahill County resident and the event will happen in Neahill County. The 2024 operating budget has $4,000 budgeted for this initiative. And to date, we have not approved any applications since this is the first application we have received. The project application form and information for the event is attached. Council has the option to date to approve the funding amount requested, approve the funding amount in a different amount or receive for information. That concludes my report, Mr. Reeve. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vanekul. So we have a request to approve funding in the amount of $600 to assist in the costs associated with the Robbie Burns night. With funding to come from the Rural Connections Grant Policy Program. What is the wish of council? Counselor Poos.
I would make the motion that council approve the funding in the amount of 600 to Susan McKenzie to assist with the costs. Sorry, associated with Robbie Burns night with funding to come from Rural Resident Connection Grant Policy Program. I would just like to say that I enjoy what she's doing right now for our community. I also would like to say that I love the fact that she's gone and got local stuff to source. I also would like to say that I love the fact that she's gone and got local stuff to source this actual event, which supports the whole idea of supporting our local businesses. So that is the reason why I don't mind bringing this forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions from council? Counsel Penner?
Not a question, just I echo your thoughts, and I, I hope she gets a very good turnout, and it's a great way of bringing the community together. And it's just unfortunate that in order to get a liquor license, it's just so expensive, you know, which is so unfortunate. Not that I'm encouraging it, but some people like a drink with their meal, so she's putting a lot of thought into this event. So I wish her well, and I hope she's supported.
Okay, thank you for that, and Counsel Fobes, yes, please.
And I'll add to Counselor Penner's. The reason why they can't do the liquor license, it's the insurance that's involved with them having that license in the first place. That's what's costing so much money, and in fact, it's more than the money she's asking for. I know this because of the Torrington oil mines and how we do things there to protect ourselves.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion related to the motion that we approve funding in the amount of six hundred dollars to assist in the costs associated with the Robbie Burns night with funding to come from the Rural Resident Connections Grant Policy Program? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I am going to ask the question, all those in favor. And that is approved unanimously, thank you. The next item in our agenda is seven point two, two thousand twenty-five election, Returning Officer and Substitute Returning Officer Appointment. And again, Ms. Vander Cool, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. So the Local Alberta Elections Act outlines the process for appointing a returning officer responsible for conducting the municipal election. The position must be appointed by council resolution no later than June thirtieth of the election year. Since the nomination period begins January first, it is recommended that the returning officer be appointed before this date to ensure candidates have designated individual to receive and sign nomination papers. If a returning officer is not appointed, the C A O is automatically deemed the returning officer. In the Election Act, it also outlines that council by resolution must appoint a substitute returning officer. The substitute will assume all duties of the returning officer if they are not, are unable to perform their responsibilities. I have listed in the report which individuals cannot be appointed as the returning officer or the substitute returning officer, and a list of the duties that they must perform. We are recommending that I am appointed the returning officer for the two thousand twenty-five election, and Ushba Khalid as a substitute returning officer. Both of us will ensure we participate in the municipal affairs training for elections, and that we are well-prepared for the responsibilities. Council today has the option to appoint the recommended returning officer and substitute returning officer, request further information, or receive for information. Just a reminder, if council does not by motion appoint someone, the C A O is automatically deemed the returning officer. That concludes my report, and I look forward to any questions council might have.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a recommendation that we appoint Ms. Vander Cool and Ms. Khalid as substitute returning officer for the two thousand twenty-five election. And I was thinking, after all the work that we placed on Ms. Khalid yesterday, governance, maybe she wouldn't have time for this. I also am aware that she's quite capable, so. Is there any direction from council related to this item? I would be looking for a motion to appoint Counsel Fobes, please.
I would make the motion to appoint Carolyn Vander Cool as the returning officer and Ushba Khalid as the substitute returning officer for the two thousand twenty-five municipal election.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions from council related to the motion to appoint a returning and substitute returning officer? I'm not seeing any, so Counsel Fobes has made the motion that council appoint Carolyn Vander Cool as the returning officer and Ushba Khalid as the substitute returning officer for the two thousand twenty-five election. Seeing no question or comment, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor. And that's carried unanimously, and congratulations to the both of you. All right. The next item on our agenda is Bylaw nineteen oh eight, which is Electoral Boundaries and Council Composition. And again, Ms. Vander Cool, if you would, please.
Thank you again, Mr. Reeve. So today, I'm bringing Electoral Boundaries and Council Composition Bylaw back for second and third reading. In September, council had their first look at this bylaw and provided first reading to get the process moving forward to meet the legislative requirements. Since it's been a couple of months, I'll review the purpose of this bylaw with you. This bylaw is to divide the county into seven electoral divisions with a minor electoral boundary change for Division Four and Division Six to include the entire hamlet of Torrington in Division Four. No changes are going to be made to Divisions One, Two, Three, Five, and Seven. Request that one council represent each of the seven electoral divisions. Require that candidates for the office of councillor be nominated and elected for each division. Request that one councillor be appointed by the council to the office of chief elected official, and one councillor be appointed by the council to the office of deputy chief elected official from amongst the councillors. Continue the title of chief elected official as Reeve and deputy chief elected official as Deputy Reeve. Besides the boundary change in the hamlet of Torrington, the other statements in the, in the bylaw are not new. We have operated this way since the county's formation, it just haven't been incorporated into a bylaw before. The titles of Reeve and Deputy Reeve are currently outlined in Policy three dash two, and administration believes that this information would be better suited in the bylaw alongside the details of their appointment. We will bring this policy back for deletion once the bylaw is in effect. After council provided first reading to this bylaw on September tenth, the bylaw was advertised in the Three Hills Capitol and on our website for two consecutive weeks. The sixty-day petition period ended on November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, and we received no petitions in regards to this bylaw. In order for the changes to be in effect for the next general election, the bylaw must be passed by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting today is the last meeting scheduled for two thousand twenty-four. If this bylaw is defeated or delayed until after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, the next general election will default to the current bylaw thirteen eighty-four. And the opportunity to change electoral boundaries will not take effect until the two thousand twenty-nine general election. Today, we are asking council to consider giving Bylaw nineteen oh eight a second and third reading as these changes can be made at the next municipal election. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Vander Cool. Okay, so what we would be looking for, because we've already done first reading, is a second reading to Bylaw nineteen oh eight. And I know there is at least one question related to this, so perhaps I'll let that question be asked, Counsel Fobes, prior to any motion on this subject. So Counsel Fobes, if you want, please, go ahead.
Through the chair. Because when I look at the divisions, we're as equal as we can for the voting numbers. So I look at the Torrington Trailer Park, and I'm not, hey, listen, I will answer any question from anybody in that park, true story. But I'm struggling with this a little bit, just due to the fact that we held an open house, and it wasn't really well-received. So that is a clear indication that the public does not have an issue with driving to Wimborne to vote. So I'm struggling with us giving this to them when I'm looking at the bigger picture of, why would I instill something if the public that lives in there that are affected by it don't show up to come and have a conversation with us? Like, that's, I'd like to address that with the public. It's super important when council holds these things that you come out and speak what you feel, because when I sat there, the people that did show up were from inside of Torrington, they're not going to be affected by that. There was a gentleman who came that lives in rural, he's also not going to be affected by this. So of the, I guess I have a couple of questions. When we did the Huxley Water and Light Study over there, I know that we went above and beyond to put them on people's doorsteps, to put them in their mailboxes. Did we do this for the trailer park, is what I'm asking? Did we go and give them an actual physical notice like we did in Huxley? Because I guess I'm looking from this perspective of, how do we improve public coming out to something that is super important to a few of them, but obviously not to all? So how do I improve as a councillor, not just from my division, if they're coming in or staying in Wade's? How do we get them to do that without, without sounding like we're forcing them?
Mr. Hogan, you want to tackle that one?
Through the chair, I'll defer that to the presenter to outline the communication strategy that was used.
Then Ms. Vander Cool.
Thank you. We actually did put in everyone's mailbox in Torrington and in Wimborne, a notice that that public engagement was going to occur.
Okay, was there any follow-up, Counsel Fobes, or, okay? Counsel Penner?
Just a, something to say. It is frustrating, truly, it is. And at the end of the day, you know, I beat my head against the wall sometimes with the turnout of some of these events, and I think, okay, these people put me, my, my division put me in this seat and along with the rest of you, and they hoping that we make the best decisions. We've put a lot of thought into it, all the material has been presented to us, and adequate material has been presented to us. So that's how I deal with a lot of this stuff, and I fully hear what you're saying. It does get frustrating, because we commit our time and, and resources to it as well as couns, you know, as being a councillor.
Okay, thank you for that comment. So at this point, if there's no further discussion, I would be looking for a motion, Counsel Fobes.
No, it's a follow-up question. Ms. Vander Cool, when, because I know we did receive some email requests. How many of them lived in the trailer park of the ones that you received?
We couldn't verify which ones were living in the trailer park, I just said if it lived in Torrington. So we don't know if they were actually living in the trailer park or on the other side of the highway, on Highway twen, on the other side of Highway twenty-seven.
Okay, what's the wish of council? Counsel Penner?
To me, bringing them all into the same community makes sense. I do hear about numbers and everything else. So I will make the motion that council provides second reading to Bylaw nineteen oh eight, that being a bylaw to establish the composition of Neheel County Council, divide Neheel County into divisions, and establish the boundaries for each division, and determine the title of the positions of Neheel County Chief Elected Official and Councillors.
Okay, so thank you for that. So we do have a motion from Counsel Penner that we give second reading to Bylaw nineteen oh eight, and that is a bylaw to establish the composition of Neheel County Council, divide Neheel County into divisions, and establish the boundaries of each division, and determine the title of the positions of Neheel County Chief Elected Official and Councillors. Any further discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. Counsel Christie?
Through the Reeve, because of the comments post-election, I haven't heard any comments since, I'd moved third reading to Bylaw nineteen oh eight.
Okay, so the comments after the last election seem to indicate this might be something to do. So we have a motion from Counsel Christie then to provide third reading to, and final reading to Bylaw nineteen oh eight. And we all know that that's to establish boundaries and to determine position names, so. Any further discussion, question, comment? If not, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. So I guess we have new boundaries for the next election. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is seven point four, Neheel County Village of Carbon Extension Agreement. And Mr. Hogan, I believe this is yours.
Through you, Mr. Chair, you have, you have multiple items coming up that are all relatively similar in nature. As councils are aware, we have, we have a number of service agreements with surrounding, with our neighboring municipalities, particularly the urbans that are enclaved within our borders. We, that, the existence of those agreements is something that is mandated by the province, and they were the result of negotiations with those communities a number of years ago. While a number of those agreements are coming up on expiry, the intent was to start looking at them and to renegotiate them. During that, the province announced that they're, they're announcing, the province announced that they're going to be announcing changes to the ICF framework and structures in the spring of two thousand twenty-five. So when we look at, at that forewarning that the province has given, not knowing what that future announcement is going to be, the parties involved thought it would be advisable to look at extending the current agreements on the same terms and conditions into, for another year. And I know that September thirtieth is not quite a full year, but the idea being that we could see what the province's announcement was, and then potentially renegotiate those agreements, having that, that further bit of knowledge. So the, the items that are in front of you today are basically the agreement to do just that. So it's an agreement between us and the other party, in this case, Carbon, saying we are going to be moving, we're going to be extending a number of existing agreements to September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five with the same terms and conditions. This is identical to the agreement that we, that we entered into with Three Hills not long ago for the same purpose, and for the same reasons. And so the, the updates have been to the, to the agreements themselves that are listed in the, in the document.
Okay, thank you for that. So this basically allows us the room to just continue in agreements without having to renegotiate prior to the end of this year, which would be a fairly large task. And so what is the wish of council? It's recommended that we authorize, so Counsel Christie?
Through the Reeve, just a question on, there's some rate changes coming with the extension, like on the per capita stuff? Would that have inflation involved in it, or not? It has on the previous years, comes up on the dispatch services is what I'm looking at.
Through the, through the chair, there is some, there are, some of the agreements do contain what we call escalators, and so those would be those inflationary mechanisms you talked about. So for example, the recreation agreement would have a, that's the M O U to assist recreational operations. I believe that agreement contains a two percent escalator, that's already accounted for. So those can be, those can be accommodated.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Fobes?
Through the chair to C A O. Would we include in a motion the date of September two thousand twenty-five as the expiry? Or that doesn't matter in the motion?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, it's, that's fine to not be in the motion, because it's contained in the agreement itself.
Okay, Counsel Fobes?
Well, then, on that note, I would make the motion that authorizes the Reeve and the C A O to sign the Neheel County Village of Carbon Extension Agreement.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that we authorize the Reeve and C A O to sign the Neheel County Village of Carbon Extension Agreement, which basically just extends the current agreements that we have with the Village of Carbon for a period of about a year. Are there any further questions or discussion related to that motion? I'm not seeing any, are we prepared for the question? All right, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda is seven point five, which is Neheel County Village of Linden Extension Agreement. And again, Mr. Hogan, if you would, please.
Through the chair. The, I think probably the easiest way is to say this is essentially identical to the last item that we talked about. The reasoning The reasoning and purposes are the same. And so if there are any questions or comments, I will leave that there unless council would like me to expand further.
Okay, thank you for that. So basically what we're doing here is exactly what we did with the Village of Carbon, now with the Village of Linden, and that's to sign an extension that would allow us to just extend our agreement for a period of time. And what we're waiting for is new regulation, basically, from the province and direction in terms of what's expected. So any question or comment? We need a motion. Thank you, Councillor Cunningham.
I'll move the council authorize the Reeve and CAO to sign the Neill County Village of Linden Extension Agreement.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Cunningham. So we have a motion that authorize the Reeve and CAO to sign the Neill County Village of Linden Extension Agreement. If there's no further discussion and you're ready for the question, okay, Councillor Whitstock?
Just verification, these are strictly the ICF agreements. They have nothing to do with IDPs, correct?
Mr. Hogan?
Through you, Mr. Reeve, that's correct.
Thank you.
The intermunicipal development plans are not part of these extensions.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity. We're just talking about ICF agreements and this extension applies to that specifically. Okay, any further question or discussion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 7.6, and this is Neill County Town of Trosu Extension Agreement. And Mr. Hogan, if you would, please surprise us.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I do have one little surprise on this. The, in the agreement itself, and if you'll pardon me, I'm just going to there on my agenda page, in the the purposes and the outcomes of this agreement are the same as the two you've previously dealt with. The one item that we would ask to amend, and again, pardon me, I'm just moving towards the the agreement itself, is the fire hall lease agreement. We're asking to be, to have removed from the extension agreement. So in discussions with Trosu and further discussions with our own department, we, that agreement has essentially been renegotiated already. And so we actually don't need it as part of this agreement. So that hasn't, hasn't come yet, but that that's in process and basically finalized with the parties. So we would actually ask to remove 1C and then the other agreements would be renumbered accordingly.
Okay, so basically what we're doing is we're amending this extension agreement to remove item 1C, which is a Trosu Fire Hall Lease Agreement, because that's being negotiated outside of this extension. And so items D, E and F would become items C, D and E. Okay, any further discussion or question to this extension agreement? If not, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the extension agreement as amended. Councillor Christie?
I'd make the motion to authorize the Reeve and CAO to sign the Neill County Town of Trosu Extension Agreement as amended.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so we have a motion that acknowledges that we just made an amendment to that agreement and that council authorized the Reeve and CAO to sign Neill County Town of Trosu Extension Agreement as it has just been amended. And basically the amendment is to remove the item of the fire hall lease agreement as that's being negotiated separately. Any further question or comment? If not, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is 7.7, Voting Decisions. And again, Mr. Hogan, I'll come to you. You would, please.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this is an item that was placed on today's agenda at the request of Councillor Forbes. So having said that, I will defer to Councillor Forbes.
Okay, Councillor Forbes, if you would, please.
Thank you. I want to clarify that the decisions I make as a councillor are based on the information provided to us as a council, as well as the responses I receive from administration to the questions I present, not only from myself as a councillor, but the concerns residents have with items that come before council. These decisions are made with the best interests of not just the residents of Division Four, but all of Neill County. I believe we are a unified community, not just an individual division. If any resident of Neill County has concerns with my voting decisions, I encourage you to address me directly. My fellow councillors can only speculate as to why I have made certain decisions. I assure you that my choices are always aimed at benefiting all residents and industry that support our county. This applies not only to budget approvals, but to all decisions we make as a council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Forbes. And I guess at this point, I would be looking for just an acknowledgement that council accept Councillor Forbes' statement for information. Councillor Penner?
I'll make that motion that council accept Councillor Forbes' statement for information.
Okay, thank you. And just acknowledge, Councillor Forbes, thank you for that clarification. And thank you, Councillor Penner, for the motion. And so so everyone's aware of what we're doing. We're just accepting for information the presentation from Councillor Forbes. Any further discussion? Councillor Christie?
Just a comment that I appreciate the statement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Christie. Seeing no other discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And the motion to accept for information is approved unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is council and committee reports. And the first one is 9.1, which is Drum Solid Waste.
So EPR, the death of all of us, no, sorry, didn't say that. So our management and the EPR committee, which I don't sit on, have been in discussions with Circular Materials. So I'm just bringing this to your attention. We have not signed a contract as yet because they have not produced a contract to us. They've discussed it. They are guaranteeing guaranteeing us 18 months. So keep that in the back of your mind going forward. And a couple of the sites to do with Drum, Carbon is one of them, and Moran, they are very short term because there's not other stuff offered there. This is just what they're telling us. And within this 18 months or at the 18 month, they may tell us that they are not using any of our sites. They will designate sites to be used. So, and then when it comes to the recycling part as Drumhalla Solid Waste as a processor, same thing, they're doing 18 months. They are giving us $976 a month per site to to work around. That's the, to keep us operating, I guess you'd say that. And they're also offering us $200 a metric ton. That's what they're prepared to pay. That's for cardboard, plastic and tin. Currently, we're at $90 a bale on the cardboard. So it's an average price. We can, we can pay our wages and that kind of stuff at this time. We agreed to go ahead with them to, because it's only for 18 months, we are going to work through it without replacing any equipment. We're going to baby all the equipment we've got. Hope, keep our fingers crossed that nothing goes down. They asked for us to use number three as a collection building, building number three as a collection site. They would like us to modify it so that the recyclables could be just pushed off. We have said no. And also, the landfill is too close to Drumhalla and we do not want to be the cause of rodents anymore than we already are. So we have said no to that and because this is only for 18 months, we are not spending a cent on upgrading the building to theirs, to what they want. So after a lengthy discussion, I asked them, asked management, the staff from Circular Materials, have they been on site and understand our site or sites as in the county? And the answer was no. The initial staff that did do the rounds and check out all the sites no longer work for them. So, which is a huge rule block for me, that they don't even understand the landscape of our site. So like I said, no agreements have been signed, so we can deal with some of these issues going forward, but I just wanted to bring it to council's awareness that this is not full speed ahead program yet and could be sometime, especially for rural. And remember, this is just recycling. This is not curbside pickup. This is, what I'm discussing here today is our transfer sites and where we offer our recycling. So we as Neill County own our transfer sites. So we, going forward, say after the 18 months, we may be able to or wish to have an agreement with Drum Solid Waste to take our recycling because we own our sites. But a lot of the other municipalities, the Crown owns their transfer sites, so they cannot enter into an agreement with Drumhalla Solid Waste because the Crown owns that land. And we are lucky at Neill County, I'm not sure how it happened in the past, that we own the land, this is what I've been told, that our transfer sites sit on. So that's very positive for us. We can make agreements with other companies. Not necessarily, it may not be Drum Solid Waste, it could be whoever, SAWA or whoever, you know, going forward. So on, we wanted to have a motion to go back to the board that we were, it's all finalized with Circular Materials, but we could not may present a motion to the December 22nd meeting because we don't even have the agreements signed. We kind of know what's in them, but we're not, we don't know for sure. But there is a meeting coming up and staff wouldn't know about it. Alberta Muni's, Rural Municipalities of Alberta, are putting it on on December 16th. It's just an hour and a half long just to get the inside scoop on EPR, the current implementation status of it. So if you'd like me to forward that to you, council members, I can forward it to you. Anyone's more than welcome to join in. I'm not sure what we all learned from it, but Circular Materials, Product Care, Alberta Recycling Management Authority supposedly are all going to be presenting.
Cal, Deputy Reeve McGee?
Thanks for being the bearer of uncomfortable information. I would love to have that information and I think it's, that'd be great. Thank you.
So this might be another case of where we have the cart before the horse and the cart doesn't even have wheels.
Correct. And there, there are some municipalities that chose not to sign on to this and they in the end of the day might be the smart ones, but we don't know. So we're giving it the 18 month and we will see where we're at. Recycling, no matter what it is, is highly subsidized and we must keep that in the back of our mind and it is something that we need to offer. It is just, it's not mandated on us, but it's just something that our ratepayers and residents like to do in the good of the environment. So it's a highly subsidized industry.
So the one item that most of our ratepayers would love to hear about, you totally did not mention, which is glass, G L A S S, cardboard, plastic, tin. People are looking for glass. And so I'm sure hopeful that as the province writes the regulation and whatever around extended producer responsibility and the recycling side of that, that there'll be an acknowledgement that there's a ton of, more than a ton, probably many, many thousand tons of consumer glass out there, sitting in cardboard boxes in my garage and others, waiting for an opportunity to be recycled. And I heard about it at my ratepayer meeting in Huxley, so.
I'm sorry to say you might be building another shed. In Alberta, there is a program in B.C., but it is too expensive to ship and the product that they make from it, it's very good, but the byproduct they make is a reinforcement, it looks like little rocks or aggregate, but it's very light and they can't get enough in a truck to justify the trip because a lot of trucking companies are on weight. So there are companies out there and kudos to everybody that's in the business of recycling products. It's kudos. There are a lot out there, but whether it makes business sense at the end of the day is what they're all finding out that some of them aren't and they're having to shut down. But there are programs in B.C., but there is nothing in Alberta right now that we know of as an association for glass. So it's going to the top of the hill right now. Sorry to have to say it.
Well, this might be another editorial comment that's inappropriate, but wind and solar don't make sense either, but we're still doing that in Alberta, so. Exactly. All right, well, thank you very much, Councillor Penner, for that. We appreciate the update and certainly you have our support in putting forward Neill County's position that it needs to get done, so thank you. All right, Division Five update 9.2, Councillor Cunningham?
Okay, sorry, I see I have a lot of, lot of notes here, but anyhow, I'll be quick. Neill Housing Meeting, Organizational and Regular Meeting on November 27th, and we'll have minutes coming for you soon. I do also sit on the Finance Committee of Neill Housing with two other council members, one from Three Hills, one from Carbon. December 5th, the Golden Hills Lodge held their annual tree lighting, which was very well attended, residents, community members, family. There was hot chocolate, fire, music, Atco, of course, lit the tree and we were always so grateful for the support of Atco. Santa and Mrs. Claus attended, there was a gingerbread, something there, can't comment further on that. And also Kirk's Alpaca Farm was there with one of their alpacas, which is always a big hit, so just another great event. November 28th, I attended the Police Advisory Committee meeting in Three Hills. Minutes, again, will be coming soon. Karen, who does the minutes, was away, but they will be coming. The one theme of the night really was the level of sophistication of the fraud that's happening. A lot of criminals are using AI now so they can replicate your voice and phone your loved ones and ask for money and why would you not, why would they not think it's you when it's your voice? So just be very mindful of that. If council will indulge me, I would just like to read if I can. This isn't about me, this is more about Sergeant Day, but that night at Police Advisory, Sergeant Day gave all of us that are involved something called the Detachment Commander, Commander's Certificate of Appreciation. And if you'll allow me, I would like to read what's on that. I was going to bring it today, but when it was snowing, I didn't want to get it wet because it's very special to me. So, but again, it's not about me getting it, but I just, I would just like people to be aware of the connection that the RCMP are having with us. So what it says is, "In recognition of your enthusiasm, compassion, dedication and exemplary way that you perform your Police Advisory Committee duties towards a community's police by the Three Hills detachment, your role is key in strengthening these relationships and with the Three Hills RCMP. You perform these duties without hesitation. My words can never be enough to praise the important work that you've done." So again, it's about that connection that Sergeant Day and his staff have with the communities that they serve. He actually had his staff and some of, like the pastor that serves for them, they all came that night just to, just to be there while we all got that. So again, as you've heard me say, I can't say enough about the work that they're doing, so. Okay, and I just wanted to say thanks to all the Neill County staff who organized the Christmas party. It was amazing, fun, food was wonderful as usual, so just thanks to everyone for that. And I just wanted to mention, first of all, thank you to Reeve King. He had asked me a couple of months ago if I would be involved in the International Women's Day Women in Business Award Event that happens in Oles in March, which I gladly accepted that. So that will be held March 7th, 2025, in Oles at the Oles Pomerine Suites. I myself, I myself, I myself and the Reeve of Mountain View County, Angel Albers, and the Reeve of Clearwater County, Michelle Swanson, serve on the Political Connections Committee. And so we've had one meeting with all of us and then we had our subcommittee meeting as well. So I will definitely bring more information forward as it comes. The theme this year is going to be shine bright and lead boldly. So yeah, definitely will bring more information. So um, yeah, definitely will bring more information. We're inviting um Emily Cooper and then um we've also asked um Minister Schultz to come and be a speaker and Minister Fur as well. So, yeah, I definitely will bring more details as they come available, but it will be, I attended last year and it was an excellent event, so really look forward to, to attending again this year. And that's all I got.
Well, thank you, um, a lot of stuff in there, but good, I appreciate that. Are there any questions for Council Cunningham on her report? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so again, thank you. Um, then the next one is nine point three, which is Community Futures, and that's you, Council Christie, please.
We had our Christmas celebration last Thursday. Um, one of the things, we didn't have an actual meeting, but we did introduce a, a new loan program, which is a builder's bridge financing program to assist contractors that are building homes that need bridge financing from when they sell that home to start the next home. So they could be eligible for up to three hundred thousand over a short period of time if they qualify. It still has to go through our Loans Committee to verify security and that kind of stuff, but it assists them so they can start the next construction project while the other one's being sold. So it, up to three hundred thousand. So it, in, in the southern part of the, of the Community Futures District, there's a couple of contractors that are struggling to get from one home to the next. And we need homes, so there's a system to get going. So I've left some brochures for Wendy and we'll see how it goes.
Love it.
Sounds great. All right, um, the next item on that is nine point four, which is a report on the Division Seven Ratepayers Meeting. And first and foremost, I want to thank um both C A O, uh, Mike Hogan, our Infrastructure Director, Mike Zier, and our amazing Director of Community Services, Mr. Gannon. And even more amazing is that lady who does all those things that keep us in business here, Ms. Vanderkuul, who spent time um helping me out and it was very greatly appreciated that you attended and you kept me out of trouble. And I look at Ms. Vanderkuul and I say that. So um relatively well-attended. If I leave Council Christie off my attendance list, there was nineteen individual ratepayers who chose to attend, which I was very happy with. We covered a lot of topics and um not the least of which was budget. Horseshoe Canyon managed to get into their roads and roadwork. Um, there was a whole bunch of different things that got talked about in that process, but um in general, it was very productive, I felt, and a good way to spend part of my day. And one of them came actually with a brochure from the Asinaboin West Watershed Guide for some ideas around what we might consider doing on Ag Service Board, so. Um, a program out of Manitoba, actually, so. Um, yeah, so I think that uh I was very happy with the day and very happy with the support and I was quite pleased with the attendance, so, um, yeah, so it was a good day. Um, if you want more detail on how it went down, I guess you have to come and talk to me specifically um about what was said and done. The other thing that we haven't talked about and, and I'll toss it in on my report and then I'll allow you, the rest of you, to comment. I just want to say again, I very much appreciated the um Governance Seminar um session that we had yesterday uh with Mr. George Cuff. And I also want to express my appreciation to administration for making sure that that got in place and happened. Um, there's a lot of conversation that we are going to need as council coming out of that, but overall, I felt, again, a very productive, worthwhile day. So I'll leave it there for me and I'll let anyone else on council who wishes to comment to comment, so. Okay, Council Fokes.
No, I'm not a new counselor anymore.
After yesterday?
After yesterday, I'm not a new counsel, after year one, you're not a new counselor. Although I'm still learning like I'm a new counselor, which I appreciate everything that we did learn yesterday. It really did give me some more guidance on the things that I could do to improve myself as a counselor. So I do appreciate that. I also love um the fact that I sit at this table with um differing opinions around the issues that come towards us. And I really do like the input. Um, I do also like that um Mr. Cuff spoke about, "We are the voice for the people." That was a really good one because I, I will say that that is how I do myself as a counselor. I didn't, when I decided to run, I didn't do it because I had an agenda, I came in to see where we were because you hear things from the public and you just want to know, I want to assure the public there's nothing underhanded going on. Um, now, we are where we're at, so I do appreciate everything that I did get yesterday, um, including his answering of my questions. I like the fact that he was checking in with us throughout the day to ask, "How are you doing?" I felt like my brain was leaking a little, but that's normal when I'm learning anything new. So I do appreciate all of that.
Thank you for that, Council Penner.
I echo what you're saying, but I'll just add to it. I was actually um very relieved, whatever, that a lot of the stuff that he recommended, um, we are, we already have it implemented and it's just some little um tweaks here and there. Um, but overall, um, a lot of it, his suggestions and recommendations, we were, in the most part, already in that process. So I, I give kudos to administration because um the stuff that you have brought forward to us is some of the stuff that he was wondering if we're already doing and so it was very, I really enjoyed it. And I don't, I don't care if you're a first year or a twenty-year, there's always something you could learn. And I think it was really good timing for us to have it right now, um, going into an election here in eleven months' time.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comment? Council Christie.
I'd like to echo both comments, but I really appreciate the staff to make us as progressive as we can be. And there's some tweaks we gotta make, but not really any major move. But for sure, our staff has been pushing us forward more than most, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for that. Any other comment? All right, I'm not seeing any at this time, so I would be open to a motion to accept for information the council and committee reports as presented. Council Christie.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept for information the council and committee reports as presented uh by Council Christie. If there is no further discussion, I am going to ask the question. Not seeing any, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is uh ten, item ten, Council Follow-Up Action List. And are there any questions related to the follow-up action list or are we good? Uh, yes, Council Fokes.
Um, through the chair to C A. Have they gotten a manager at the airport yet?
Through the chair, no. So that is, uh, I did talk with one of the other partners on that just last week, I think it was. Um, so that is, again, that's on my list to follow up this week on, to see what status of that is.
Uh, Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'm looking just to, to hear what to expect out of tomorrow's um Horseshoe Canyon discussion. Thursday, tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah, you can come tomorrow, but the rest of us are not.
Okay. Thanks for that correction, I'm glad I brought it up. But in addition, I still would like to hear just a little bit of what to expect that day.
Uh, Mr. Hogan, sure, please.
Through, through the chair, I'll defer that to Director Gannon.
Uh, Mr. Gannon, please.
Thank you, through the chair. The, the contractor that was hired to come in and work on the feasibility study is really going to give opportunity and conversation um to council to see what their vision is, to really ask some really great questions and have um a visionary session of what this looks like. Uh, as the Horseshoe Canyon only, uh, master plan only goes into um a visionary of the actual property and, and the potential there, this concentrates on the actual facility in itself. So the contractor will be working with council, asking some great questions, looking at different points of view to really understand on when they go back and they do the work, they, they have an understanding of that direction. So they're not bringing unrealistic items in the future to council that really does not play into that vision. So at this point, these visionary sessions are very important when we look at uh feasibility of such an investment to, to ensure that there is an alignment to um potentially, um, administration may have a different understanding of what that would look like. So it's great to have this proponent come here that actually works in, directly into this type of industry to pull that information and provide opportunities with a further report afterwards. Uh, I hope that provided you with the clarity you're looking for, Deputy.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, I guess I have a question, there's um around the Huxley um septic pumping uh that was supposedly coming in Q four and I'm just wondering when we might see it. I don't see it on the agenda for January fourteenth, and so I'm just wondering where we are in the process and how we're moving forward on that. Mr. Hogan or?
Through, through the chair, I'll defer that to Director Zier.
Thank you for that. Um, so through the chair, yes, uh, my area, I should have updated the, the date on this. We are looking at putting the, we're currently developing the R F P for this uh septic pumping program. Um, looking to release it in the spring for ultimate implementation in the, in the summer, fall of twenty twenty-five. So once we have the, the results back from that, we can bring forward council a discussion piece at the, potentially the Cal, just on, uh, more of an identification of what we're looking at for the program and, and costs that we've come back with and that sort of thing.
Okay, and so I guess my follow-up question would be then, if we're not going to be in place until potentially that late in the year, next year, um, are we doing some communication piece with our ratepayers in Huxley so they're aware that that responsibility still rests with them going forward until such time as we have actually a program in place?
Through the chair, we can, we can put, um, we can put some communication around that together.
Okay. All right, and then I have, I guess, another question through you, Mr. Hogan for Mr. Gannon around um the land acknowledgement and where we are, if anywhere, on that one. Mr. Hogan, go ahead.
Through the chair, I'll defer that to, to Mr. Gannon and possibly provide comment after.
Thank you, through the chair. Uh, we've, we've got a list of a, a few um organizations and individuals that we're considering to bring back to council to have a conversation of what this has looked like for them and what that process could potentially be. Um, we felt it was important to actually have a proponent come here and discuss who's uh gone through the whole process themselves and really understands that portfolio or that expectation of um relationship building with, uh, with this type of program. Uh, so we're looking at bringing that back in the first quarter as their um, uh, as their availability is uh more um readily understood.
Okay, yeah, and I know there was no, um, there was no expectation for uh quick and immediate delivery on that item, but it's in our follow-up action in Q four of this year. And so again, I'm just wanting an update on where we're at with that, so thank you for that. Any other, uh, Council Whitstock?
Yes, just getting back to the Horseshoe Canyon Visioning uh that's scheduled here for the twelfth. Is there a way to participate through video conferencing or through Teams?
Mr. Hogan? Sorry, Council Whitstock?
No, that's fine, uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Through Mr. Chair, we'll, uh, we'll make arrangements to, to facilitate that.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thursday. I have it right in my, I have it right here.
I understand it goes in your calendar automatically or something, and then it's lost to me forever. Okay, any other comment with regard to the Council Follow-Up Action List? If not, I would entertain a motion to receive uh for information. Oh, no, Council Fokes, anytime, please.
Um, so when we're meeting as the working group on Thursday for the Horseshoe Canyon Visionary Plan, will the person that's facilitating this be asking questions around what the working group did when they were deciding what that should look like? Will those questions be considered or does that make sense?
Okay, uh, Mr. Hogan? Or Mr. Gannon, whoever wants to lobby that one?
Um, through Mr. Chair, so the working group, the working grouping question, um, which, I guess I'm looking for clarity on the question in terms of.
Well, they gave a term of reference that they thought that that should look like. I'm just wondering if we're still gonna go with what they um suggested to council at that time or are we going in a different direction?
Through, through the chair, I think, um, and after I'm done, if there is additional comment from Director Gannon, um, please join in. I think the intent is to, to take that information, to take what council's vision is and to arrive at um some clarity as to what's, what's coming out of that. Um, so what we want to ensure is that if whatever we're going forward with is what's the group is endorsing, or we have some level of direction that we want to channel resources towards, towards figuring out. So I think any previous work done would form part of that discussion, but we're also really interested in where, having, having alignment among the members of councils to what direction we might go, to the extent that we can.
Uh, Council Penner.
I think it's very important that we do acknowledge the task, that, that committee that was put together, that's why they were put together, um, and they, we drew from different areas of the county that were on that force. So I think it's very important that that is part of the whole big. And will that um individual, the consultants will be on hand, they are not zooming in, correct? They will be here in person? Through the um C A O?
The, uh, my understanding is that, yes, they'll be here, they'll be here in person. I believe I'll refer to Director Gannon, but I believe we specifically requested that as part of the process.
Mr. Gannon, if you wish.
Thank you, through the chair, a couple of items here. The, the contractor was given the uh reference material, the Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan, as a reference to understand and was given all the material that, that pertained to the feasibility and the expectations that were provided by council. Um, I also want council to understand is that the visionary session is not, is also not limited to that. The reason why it's coming to council is whatever the perceptions within the master plan, it's gonna draw out what, what council's expectations are to move forward, but is using uh the information to understand how that format, how they potentially could uh gather that information from council at that time.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Gannon. All right, are there any other questions or are we prepared to uh move um the follow-up action list for information or as presented? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to receive for information the Council Follow-Up Action List as presented.
Okay, thank you very much, Deputy Reeve. So I have a motion to accept the Council Follow-Up Action List as presented. There's no further discussion, I'm gonna ask the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Um, as there are no closed session items, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And it's twelve oh seven and we are adjourned.